We're going to start with liaison reports.
John.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey. It's been a busy week for me and all of us. Thursday on the 2nd of March, I was surprised to see three of my colleagues at the Human Relations Advisory Committee at the police station. I had made a mad dash back from New York and made the meeting with a few seconds to spare. But the takeaway from that, and I'll let you guys get your, obviously have your own thoughts, was that there's still ongoing discussions as to what the group views as its responsibilities and how it would like to operate under. It has some opinions. Most interestingly, Wakefield's Human Relations Advisory Committee attended this meeting, I guess on behalf, by imitation of Reading's H-Rac. And presented their own structure and how they operate in the town of Wakefield, which is very different. They function via, under both the schools and the town, such that they are given issues to consider by the town manager commonly, or the superintendent. They form an opinion and they respond back to that town manager with a course of action. But it's, they've also got, most importantly, got a written policy that details this. And I'm guessing that the Reading H-Rac might see some merit in at least considering that policy as a start point for their own consideration. Friday, I met with Mr. Eric Burkhart, in tonight's packet, you'll see a letter penned by Eric to us following our Tuesday meeting two weeks ago. And Eric and I sat down and I, he had some heartfelt comments and I went and kind of recited where I thought my head was at and where the board's head was at. And I think he was very cordial after the meeting and I got a very polite email after our coffee at Starbucks. On Saturday, like town manager Kevin and Barry, I helped, together with the library trustees and staff, welcome Congressman Seth Moulton to Reading for his town hall. It was really interesting and I wish we had more of that because the big draw there was most of the attendees, by my eyeballs, were not from Reading. Just a quick show of hands and it wasn't, it wasn't less than 50 percent. It might have been 50 percent, but it was just amazing how many folks are not from Reading. And then last night, together with Mr. Berman, sat down with Caitlin Mercurio and Jeanne McCormick and began a discussion on the request for a resolution. And that was just, I thought, very cathartic. There was a lot of good conversation. A set of minutes was produced. Bob, is there a place where we would post the minutes on the web? I mean, I don't know what our policy, formal groups have a place to post minutes, but I'm not sure how this one will go.
Yeah, it would really go with the selectmen's.
Was this posted meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's got to have minutes.
Yeah, it'd be in the selectmen's area. Whether we carve out something, I don't know.
Can you help there, Paul?
I believe Laura has set up something in the selectmen's.
Because it's really a subcommittee.
It's a sub-group of selectmen, so that's why it's involved.
All right. I also made an audio of the entire meeting, which actually came up pretty good. The room is great. It's very quiet and you can hear everyone. It's a little annoying because while I'm typing, it sounds like a 1960's news program with a teletype waiting in the background. But it's just a good way to document the conversation. And we have a follow-up meeting scheduled for Thursday night at 7:30 this time in the room adjacent to this, the conference room.
So that'll be this week, Thursday?
That would be this week. We're trying to get a couple in here. Barry's got some travel ahead of him next week. I canceled the conference call for Thursday night and we'll find a way to get it done. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Kevin?
Yeah, I'll just emphasize the two things. Obviously, John mentioned the two areas that we were at over the last week. The Human Relations Advisory Committee, I thought we had a very good and lively discussion at that meeting. And, you know, from it, as John had mentioned, looking at Wakefield as a potential model moving forward, not necessarily adopting word for word, but certainly looking at it from the standpoint of, of something that is a great starting point. I think the biggest difference now between, so if people are familiar, the Human Relations Advisory Committee right now is an advisory committee to the Board of Selectmen only. The way that's set up in Wakefield, they have a little bit more buy-in. So they also have, not only the Board of Selectmen, but the school committee as a joint committee for the Human Relations Advisory Commission that they have down there. I think, Bob, the question that we have moving forward, obviously, is, is that something under our bylaws that we're allowed to do? Obviously, Wakefield must be, but that's something certainly of a question of ours. It's not something if we, if we can't, it's not something we can't work around, but that's kind of step one where we wanted to see and get the opinion maybe from either you or town council. Can those two bodies actually have a joint committee? Would it be the first thing? And then look at the structure that the Wakefield Human Rights, excuse me, Human Rights Commission is what they're called. Look at the structure and the way they formatted themselves and, you know, maybe pull from that and, you know, kind of adopt it to make it our own would be kind of the next steps. But I thought it was a good meeting. I thought leaving there, I thought everybody had a little bit better understanding, both between the Human Relations Advisory Committee and this board, you know, what I think the objective is moving forward and what's the best thing to do moving forward. So I thought that was a good meeting. And then, you know, it was always, it's always a pleasure to have our legislation come back here from Washington to, you know, address the town leadership as well as address the citizens. It probably would have been nice, maybe next time, we can, we can have a Reading-only room if we're going to hold it in Reading. I hate to say that out of town, but sorry, we're going to put you in the next room in the satellite division where I think most of the Reading folks ended up.
It was really oversubscribed.
It was. You know, I have a feeling we had, if we're into the other rooms where they, you know, just for, to give you a quick setup at the library, they had the main room, which holds about 150, I believe. Right? It holds what the fire chief said could hold that day.
Yeah. It was only 150 in the room regardless of how many were in the room.
Exactly. But then they had some overflow rooms set up throughout the library with a three-second delay, big screen board, so you could see what was going on, what Congressman Moulton was being asked, what he was saying when he was addressing the crowd. But it'd be interesting to go into those rooms because we did the one in the main room and Bob asked how many folks are here from out of town and probably half, if not maybe a little bit more, you know, the hand raised. I bet if we went into the other rooms, it probably would have been less. And I saw a lot of people coming out of those rooms that were Reading residents more than I saw coming out of the main room. So just as a note, maybe next time, I guess bigger venue, but make sure we have a Reading, a Reading room in front of the congressman if he's going to come here again would be good. I'm sure those residents would appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay. Eric?
I attended a meeting of the trust fund commissioners and most of us know the work of the trust fund commissioners through the work that they do with the, on the hospital trust fund and cemetery trust fund, the two really large funds that they manage. But they also manage a large number of very small trusts set up by families years and years ago and, which make donations or scholarships. And so at this meeting, we went through, probably made about, we didn't actually make the scholarships, but at least gave, you know, sort of set the money aside that for graduating senior scholarships will be given out in, in May. So there's a large number of those family funds that, that we manage. And then we also said goodbye to our, our town treasurer, who's been on that committee for a really long time. And so it was, you know, just been yeoman's work on that. I was the only selectman not at the Human Relations Advisory Committee. I was in Hamilton at my son's play and, and so I missed that, but did hear from, from folks and did want to kind of talk a little bit about sort of the meeting we had last night, the subcommittee on the, on the resolution that was presented by some proponents here. I think we really made some, some good strides and I think that although that resolution was not proposed by the Human Relations Advisory Committee, I think it really relates to the work, I think, that they're doing and the work that we need to do in figuring out what the next steps are for H-Rac, whether it's a commission with a big C, commission with a little c. The fact that, that resolution that came before us a couple of weeks ago was sort of an ad hoc kind of gathering of, of people really concerned on issues, went to H-Rac sort of thinking that's the place to kind of talk about issues of, of inclusion and things like that. You know, it's not sort of a formal proposal from them and, and so, but I think the two, the work of the two are really related in that the fact that, you know, a group of 50 people came here one night with hundreds of signatures, it really dovetails into the work. So I think, you know, we as a board really need to, you know, sort of pay attention to this and really get on the right footing with Human Relations Advisory and sort of give them their path and, and, you know, help them sort of figure out what they're going to do and what their relationship is going to be with the town. And also I look forward to sort of finalizing this, this draft. I think, you know, working from, with the selectmen arena and the proponents, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of synergies there and I think that there'll be a work product I think we can all be kind of proud of. But I do want to just make sure that we recognize that these are not two unrelated things. These are very much related and the fact that so many people came out and discussed this is something that I think, you know, it's not filling potholes, it's not putting teachers in classrooms, but it's something that we as town leaders really need to figure out and make a priority. And that's it.
Dan?
I was at the PHRAC meeting. I think it's been adequately reported. Senator Lewis was also an attendee there. I should mention that.
Oh, yes, thank you, Dan.
Appreciate his attending. Barry and I just met as the volunteer appointment subcommittee. We are filling a position on the council on aging this evening. We also have a nominee for an associate position on the council. I don't believe there are any candidates for the CPDC vacancy that we have seen yet and there may be others coming up in the near future. So we'll, we'll stay tuned on that one.
Well, just one more point on Congressman Moulton's visit. I'd be remiss if, if I didn't give a real big shout out to Amy Landon and her staff to really turn that around. I mean, the library was open for business and then they closed at 2:00 and by 2:45 they had the place cleared out, set up, more people than they had ever expected to show. There were so many people from out of town, I made a point of talking to some and the comments on the line and then in the hallway were, wow, I wish we had a library like this. So.
Yeah, good point, good point. It was a great job by staff.
Do they want to help us pay for ours? Don't we check donations?
We put the hat out.
So as you know, I attended several of these different events with you, but, you know, we've talked enough about these tonight. You guys have done a great, very thorough job of explaining what was going on at all of them. I will however plug shamelessly the fact that the Reading Rotary Club at our high school will be hosting the Taste of Metro North. That's going to be on March 29th and it has its own Facebook page and its own website, Taste of Metro North. And I bring that up and say it shamelessly because they've recruited 27 restaurants to come. We typically expect three to 500 Reading residents and a lot of North Reading residents as well. And the other thing that's most interesting about that particular event is it's one of a handful of major fundraisers and Reading Rotary Club is, puts their money all back into Reading. It's into the Reading Scholarship Funds, the Reading Education Fund, it's into, you know, Boy Scout, Girl Scout projects, it's into causes that are near and dear to the hearts of, you know, everybody. It really touches everybody in Reading. Food pantry, all of those things. So normally it's not a place we plug things, but this is a real civic thing that I want to plug and I urge you to go. The tickets are discounted online, not so that night. I think it's time for us to open this up to public comment. Dan?
My name is Dan Duer. I live at 519 Main Street and I also own the business at the same address, a convenience store. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, time to address the comments that were made to you before your last meeting. I know you have a full agenda, so I'll be brief. It's my understanding that Mr. Freeman, who was recently resigned chairman of the Board of Health, spoke to you at your last meeting regarding the Board of Health's proposal to significantly expand tobacco regulations. I also understand that Mr. Freeman may have called into question my personal integrity in his comments. Frankly, I'm disappointed that the chair of a town committee, not to mention someone who is running for election to the Board of Selectmen, as Mr. Freeman is, would go out of their way to insult the local business owner, but I will set that aside for more important business this evening. I'm the first to admit that I have made mistakes and inadvertently sold tobacco products to minors on two occasions in the last seven years. I have paid the price for that, for those two sales according to law and also the embarrassment of making a mistake. Let me say this loud and clear, it is not my desire to sell tobaccos to minors, ever, not even by accident. But I find it ironic when a public health official attacks local business owners like me for selling tobacco products, but they do nothing to make it illegal for minors to purchase, possess, or use tobacco like we do with alcohol. Reading tobacco sellers like me have a 95% compliance rate with regulations. That's the same compliance rate for local alcohol retailers, 95%. Nobody's talking about taking candy or fruit flavored barkers off the shelves and accusing them of using flavors to attract minors to drinking. The vast, the vast majority of the time, we get it right. We do not sell to minors. All the talk about wanting to protect minors is just that, talk, because the new regulations are a solution to a problem that does not exist. 100% of the minors can get tobacco from any source and smoke it as much as they like and the Board of Health could change that to zero, but that's not on their agenda. Why? Because they're not being honest and they, they are not being open and transparent with their process. They write regulations without inviting input from the retailers, schedule a meeting, allow each person approximately three minutes to comment with no back and forth discussion. Then the Board of Health discusses, discusses it among themselves and they're the only ones that have a vote. No democracy there. Nobody on the Board of Health has ever come to me or any other retailer to discuss their plans. I have never been asked to present evidence that we have to back up our position, that there is a way to protect minors that will not destroy my business or harm my retirement. Here's my bottom line. Board, you guys say you want to support local business. It says it wants to see more economic development in this town. The Board says it's worried about the financial health of the community. At the same time, the Board of Health says it wants to protect minors, but their proposals fail to address the tobacco use by 80% of the minors who do not get their tobacco from us retailers. The Board of Health refuses to recognize the data of their proposed policy of removing e-cigarettes and flavors, will actually condemn 10 to 15 million people who have no choice but to continue to smoke cigarettes or suffer the consequences. The Board of Health, they play fast and loose with the data to read the facts that they want to see. They've gone so far as to invite people from Winchester, Danvers, outside people to the town hearings at the Board of Health, despite the fact that these people have nothing to do, nothing about the retail business or doing business in Reading. I need you guys to stand with me and help me get the Board of Health to have an honest, open, and public conversation about the other side of the tobacco story and public health. I'd like you to get them to postpone their vote and have more dialogue. It's very important. One of the things that Andrew Freeman said is that the tobacco, Maury Busby, I don't know what the title is, but talked to all 17 of the retailers. And six, and one of them, me, is the only one that complained. The other 17 just accepted it that it's, it's going to happen, so, you know, they knew it was coming down the road. Well, I'm going to tell you, that's, that's not the case because one guy I just talked to today, Cal up at J K's, was on his way to India, or he would have been at that meeting with me. I talked to him today. He's back. He would like to have some dialogue on that. There are other retailers that don't have the flavors, so it doesn't mean anything to them. So I'm telling you, if the, and the other, the other retailers feel that the fix is in, that the decision is made, so why bother? We all work a million hours a week. We, you know, we can't waste our time on something that the fix is in. But if they want to have an open and fair and democratic dialogue, we would love to do that. They moved their meeting to March 22nd, didn't even put a time on it. I got a letter, no time on it. It's just bad communication. I mean, please, please work with me. I want to do my part to help minors. I, I want to be a partner. There's no partnership here whatsoever. Please ask the Board of Health to take, you know, to take a break and have more discussion. I'm going to close with this. Andrew Freeman has quoted in an article about the upcoming election that appeared in the Reading Chronicle on March 1st, 2017, saying, "My vision for the town is to have a town where issues like the override are discussed in an open and collaborative fashion, where everybody is heard and that way we can find solutions to address the budget." I only wish he used the same logic during his tenure at the Board of Health. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, your name is?
My name is Dan Duer.
Hi, Dan. John Arena.
Hi, John.
Every businessman I've ever met knows his business code. It's your lifeblood. It's the thing that you can't keep quiet and never stops, never satisfied. Who's buying the flavored products?
I, I have, well, number one, I only sell to people over 21. Some people are trying to quit smoking. Some people find it as a nice alternative to smoking. It's a safer alternative, albeit there is probably some health issues, but not quite as significant as cigarettes and, you know.
But it's appealing to folks that are over 21?
Absolutely. And so are the flavors. I mean.
What percentage of your business you think is flavored? Maybe you don't know it, but it, more than half, less than half?
Yeah, right. I, I sell methal and regular tobacco flavored e-juice, but I would say probably 60% of it is probably flavor.
Of your revenue stream.
Of the revenue stream derived from that. That, and also that's probably my, my biggest profits out there as far as margin.
And you said that other facilities in Reading don't have it. Is there a reason they don't?
Well, some, some of them, like it's a gas station like the Sunoco is just, he has a few customers that he just has a few packs on.
Yeah, it's not set up right.
You know, the mobile, they have a full-fledged convenience store and they, they have also e-cigarettes, not quite to the degree that I have. I just, you know, I lost a lot of revenue when they went from making it 21, so I was looking for a replacement for that. So, you know, a restart, it didn't look like a good alternative. And it has been, it's been a good, good revenue.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Hi, I'm Lori Hoden and I appreciate the opportunity to share my view of the Human Relations Advisory Committee meeting last Thursday. I appreciate that you summarized it nicely. Also, I'm a Barry, I really appreciate your acknowledgement about the connection of the Human Rights Resolution in the Human Rights Advisory Committee. So I appreciate all that and I'm hopeful that we can work together so that we can collaborate in the important work of modeling for our young people what it looks like to be a really respectful and welcoming community for all. So I have just a short statement about my feelings about that meeting on Thursday. So I've lived in, I'm Reading for 25 years and I've been a member of the Human Relations Advisory Committee for 10 years. And I'm committed to ensuring that Reading is a welcoming community for all. Tonight, I'm speaking as an adult who cares about the world of different liaisons, Jess and Catherine and Ruthie. They have been conscientious and engaged high school representatives for our committee for almost two years, attending monthly meetings despite very busy schedules. I've known Jess since her Joshua Eaton days, when she was an avid reader and member of our mother-daughter book group. Jess has always been thoughtful, so while I was not surprised about, by her professional presentation of the survey data that she, Ruthie and Catherine conducted with the full support and assistance of Principal Adam Barker, I was proud of her courage to speak to a roomful of adults, including many of the town leaders. She spoke very clearly and candidly about the results of the survey, which talked about the discrimination at Reading High School, or actually in the town, the experiences of her peers. I was upset that instead of taking responsibility for the data presented at our meeting, Mr. Arena contacted a member of the school committee to question the schools. The students were more than clear about their desire that the selectmen stand up to discrimination in town as, to be models for the school. Jess even stated, "I think the H-Rac should be related to the town to serve the whole town, not just the schools." I was just really concerned about taking the survey data and passing it on to the schools. Reading Memorial High School is not a bubble unto itself. Clearly, schoolchildren learn from the choices of adult role models in the larger community. I'm also speaking as Ruthie's mom. Ruthie is one of the only Jewish students in her class, as we are one of a small group of Jewish families in town. I'm motivated to speak tonight because of hateful acts outside the school, like swastikas in public bathrooms in our own town, and as well as an uptick in violence, bomb threats to Jewish community centers, Jewish cemeteries that have been vandalized. They are a big deal to me and my family. My grandparents, Rose and Sam Hoden, immigrated from Poland in 1932. The Nazi Holocaust ravaged our family. My grandmother, Rose Hoden, was the youngest of 13 girls and 11 of her sisters were gassed in Auschwitz. My father never knew any of his grandparents. Given the uptick in violence, I am fearful and looking to the leaders of the community to take a stand against hate speech that sets a fertile foundation for more destructive actions. In February, Gina Mercurio and Caitlin McCormick presented a thoughtfully constructed Human Rights Resolution signed by 250 Reading residents. And I'm so pleased to hear about the ongoing conversations and the meeting that happened just yesterday. There were some questions from that February meeting that I'd like to respond to. So Mr. Arena asked, tell me the difference, tell me what's the difference tomorrow if we pass a statement today? And I would just like to say, to answer that question, it would make a big difference to me and I would find it reassuring if the Board of Selectmen signed on to the Human Rights Resolution, because as leaders of our town, you're spokesmen for our values and you're role models for our young people. In addition, Mr. Arena asked, you asked, you asked also, what is an act of indifference?
I asked that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Correct that. Mr., yeah, I'm sorry. So I'm gonna, I looked it up because I thought, you know, it was, I'm assuming you asked the question because you were, you didn't know. So I'm going to quote Nobel Prize-winning author and Holocaust survivor Eli Wiesel to define indifference. He says, "The opposite of love is not hate, it's indifference. The opposite of art is not ugliness, it's indifference. The opposite of faith is not heresy, it's indifference." And I think it's our responsibility, all of our adult responsibilities, teachers in the schools, administrators in the schools, elected officials like yourselves, that we are really clearly taking a stand against indifference. So I ask you to serve as role models for our young people and make it really clear where you stand on basic human rights by collaborating with concerned citizens and confronting acts of hatred and intolerance whenever and wherever they are found. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Bob?
I wasn't there Thursday, but obviously I do want to comment on one part of what you said. In terms of, I don't know exactly the route that John Arena took to get information of the schools. I think he sent Jean Borowski an email. I had breakfast with the superintendent today. He was very appreciative of that fact. What goes on in his school department, he needs to know. The school committee needs to know. It's their responsibility. So I don't think there was anything inappropriate with that. I think it was quite, quite proper. And I know the superintendent believed that as well, just so you know.
You have to understand that we're, we're reporters when we hear something said like that. We have an obligation to report that to the public.
Yes, Linda.
I just want to point out, I'm actually on the school committee and a liaison to the Human Relations Advisory Committee and I go back and I do present what goes on at our meetings and I present at our meetings, I, I meet with the superintendent and I present at our meetings and you can hear my presentation last night at our school committee meeting as well.
Okay, great. Other public comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I know you have a heavy agenda, so I'll be brief. My name is Dennis Lane. I'm not a Reading resident. I represent the Coalition for Responsible Tobacco Retailing. I'm a retailer. I have been for 43 years. And the Coalition of Responsible Tobacco Retailers has been traveling around the Commonwealth, meeting with Boards of Health and Boards of Selectmen and interested parties to try and present a balanced view of the landscape that's affecting retailers right now. And there's no doubt that within a year or two, the entire Commonwealth will be 21 aged to buy, and that's not something that we choose to challenge. We feel every community needs to make that decision. The thing that's happening is that retailers are facing a 40% increase in minimum wage over the past three years. We all hire from the neighborhoods. A lot of kids in my neighborhood got their first job working in my store. And, but I want to tell you something that means an awful lot to me. I've been there for 43 years. The kids that were catching the school bus in my store in the 70s are coming in with their kids now. And my worst nightmare would be standing in front of a parent who used to catch the bus in my parking lot and explain why myself or one of my staff sold a pack of Marlboros to a kid. We, if we do that for the buck we make on that pack of Marlboros, we lose the gallon of milk, we lose the cup of coffee, we lose the Boston Globe, we lose the customer, we lose the market basket. So I think there is, there are two issues here. No one has really addressed in great detail that kids can purchase tobacco. I cannot purchase tobacco, but they can use tobacco. There are no laws in the Commonwealth about use. So any 14 or 15-year-old who has a pack of cigarettes can sit on the front steps of this town hall and smoke it, and no police officer can tell them no. They can't take it away. They can't threaten to call their parents. It's also, I had a conversation with an agent for the federal government who does tobacco things, and he says, "It's not illegal for a minor to come to your counter and ask for cigarettes. It's illegal for yourself, but it's not illegal for a kid who's underage to ask and hope that the clerk's not paying attention." So I think if there were purchase and use laws that were effectively reinforced by the local police, that would make a huge difference. So we're traveling all around the Commonwealth, you know, with the permission of Boards of Health and folks like you here at the Selectmen's meeting, and trying to make a differentiation between the fact that the industry wants to protect children from tobacco. We also want to protect that guy who's 30 years old on his way home from work, wants to go home and grab a Budweiser and light up a peach cigar. It's, so how can we keep retailers profitable? How can we keep responsible adults' rights to buy a peach cigar without being overpriced for it? And I have in my pocket, I'm not going to pull them out, I have two bottles of vodka, pineapple and grape. There's 40 flavors of flavored liquor. On my way here tonight on Route 93, I went by a billboard that had Captain Morgan on it. Captain Morgan has a parrot on his arm. He's got, he's selling spiced rum. He's a cartoon character. So, and so Joe Campbell's long gone, but Captain Morgan's out there on a billboard. And so no one's challenging, and obviously alcohol is restricted 21-plus. No one's taking flavors out of the liquor stores. But we're disadvantaging the Main Street American retailer. You don't want to hurt your banker. You don't want to hurt your baker. You don't want to hurt your dry cleaner. You don't want to hurt the people who give your kids jobs in your neighborhood. So what I'm asking, and I know that there's, I know that not always do the selectmen and the Boards of Health communicate and agree, but as a selectman for this town, as I've asked every town I've spoken with, I'd ask you to carefully consider the rights of responsible adults, the rights of your retailers. I'm very proud of your retailer who came here and spoke to you tonight. This is his livelihood. It's, I'm making less money than I was 20 years ago, because my profitability is just shrinking. And Obamacare, I'm not saying that's good or bad, minimum wage, I'm paying three times more for workers' comp than I was 10 years ago. It's, I used to pay 100 bucks a month to empty my dumpster, and I pay three times that now. My expenses are going up, my ability to be profitable are going up. So I just ask that you folks take a fair and balanced look at this. And if you can influence your Board of Health to delay, have additional hearings, or get more public information, especially from retailers. And I know there's always an urban legend that retailers, this is my last statement, that retailers don't come forward. There's a good reason why retailers don't come forward. They're so afraid that after they come forward, someone from the Board of Health is going to show up with a clipboard a month later and ding them. So I know you guys are in a catch-22. We're all in a catch-22. We all just want to make money. We all want to pay taxes. We all want to support our community. So I'm very honored that you gave me the opportunity to speak. And I'll answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, regards to Dennis and the previous speaker, what recourse does this board have to alter the course of events with our Board of Health?
Persuasion. No legal say.
We also have the power of appointment. When time comes to appointment.
That's all I'm trying to say.
You know, often a reasonable conversation goes a long way.
Yeah, it almost always does.
If it's, you know, if it's time to have a discussion about more public input, our friends at the Board of Health are not unreasonable people. We need to have a conversation with them. If that's the feeling of the board, that we'd like to urge them to have more public input, that's a conversation, I think. And I think to Bob's point, it's not about trying to make somebody do something. It's a dialogue is really, you know.
Yeah, I was thinking more, how do you open up, how do you encourage the conversation? We could ask.
Well, I mean, conversation like we're having, like, you know, one of the previous speakers spoke about, and we've been having, you and Barry have been opening a conversation, these came as a result of public comment. And, you know, I mean, that's kind of why we have this. And, you know, I was, I mean, I know that public comment is not a statutory requirement of a Selectmen's meeting, but in Reading, it is our habit, because we think a dialogue is really important. And so that's what we're going to do. Appreciate you coming.
I appreciate the opportunity. I think if you control it to 21, you solve a lot of problems. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comment? Yes, ma'am, you go back.
So my name's Jessica Spires. I live at 26 Overture Road, and I wanted to do liaisons between the Reading Human Relations Advisory Committee and the high school, A World of Difference Club. I just wanted to read a statement kind of clarifying our purpose in the survey that I wrote. I wrote it for Linda last night. She wanted to give it to the school committee. They, she didn't have time to read it, but I just wanted to make sure that it was shared. So as student liaisons to the Reading Human Relations Advisory Committee from the A World of Difference Club at RMHS, we created and implemented this survey in order to gather data that will be useful across the committee and our high school. After the Board of Selectmen expressed interest in the prospect of the Reading Human Relations Advisory Committee gathering more responses from Reading residents about discrimination in town, we decided that conducting such a survey in our high school would be a great way to collect a large amount of data. We drafted and conducted this survey with the aid of our principal, Adam Bacher, whose help we greatly appreciate. Our survey, which was conducted in November, garnered a total of 415 respondents. With the data we now have access to, we hope to move forward in the shared mission of A World of Difference and the Human Relations Advisory Committee to ameliorate our town and school communities for all residents, regardless of race, religion, disability status, ethnicity, gender identity, sex, or sexuality. We stress Reading students express desire for their town to take action regarding discrimination through a variety of suggestive methods, both proactive and in response to incidents. And I'll be meeting with Mr. Bacher this Friday to discuss some future projects for the A World of Difference Club. We were supposed to meet Tuesday, but something came up in his schedule. So I look forward to continuing to work with you guys.
Excellent.
Good work you did.
Yes, sir.
Jess, how many people are in the A World of Difference Club? What's the total attendance or what do you typically draw up?
I'd say the average acting group right now is about seven people. It definitely used to be much larger, but I've noticed as a whole, club participation has gone down in the schools.
Is this just seniors, or is it open to other schools?
It's currently, well, there is, I'm pretty sure there's still a branch at the middle school, but currently the club is open to everyone in the school. We're working on recruiting more. And we, it's not only seniors. We do have some juniors, and we have had some sophomores at times in our meetings, and we would really love to get some more people involved in it.
Thank you.
Excellent. And you've done, I said this to you the other night, the amount of surveying you've done is tremendous. I mean, the fact that you've gotten hundreds of responses really forwards the discussion in a very positive way. I'd like to compliment you on that. Yes, sir.
Hi. I'm Tim Rooks, 37 Curl Street. Been here for about 35 years. I came to support Dan's position, and what I really wanted to say is, you guys are asking Dan to police our kids. And it's the parent's responsibility to go out there and watch what the kids are doing, be it alcohol or tobacco. They could show up with a false ID and present it to Dan. He might not know the difference, but he'd still be responsible for selling. That problem is between the kids and their parents, and they should take the responsibility for it. I don't know how else to say it, but if you push that responsibility off on somebody else, it's not going to get done. I've watched Dan card people, because I'm a daily customer of his, and he's rejected kids who come in here. I've seen him do it. He's, he wants to have a lucrative business so he can make a living, but it belongs to the parents to keep those kids out of that situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I'm Erin Calvo Bachi, and I by no means will disparage anyone who smokes tobacco. We are not a family that does, but to the point of policing, I went on Amazon, and I could purchase flavored tobacco products. And so I did speak before the Board of Health because I really want tobacco to be treated the same as alcohol. My children do not smoke. We're not of that family, but that doesn't mean kid, we're not going to keep kids from being able to get these products until we change the laws, whereas we could have our police treating minors in possession with tobacco the same as alcohol. That is the bigger concern. That is a very big concern to me. It's a concern that three children at the middle school were in school suspension for having vapors. And the irony of that is, they may not be able to use them in school, but they can use them outside of the school. And if we really want to protect our children, which I need help in protecting my children, then I need tobacco to be treated as the same as alcohol. Please. Thank you.
Yes, Barry.
I have a question for the chief on that.
Chief.
Chief, I have a question. And maybe you're not the right person to ask, but is, if we wanted to make it in Reading, you know, misdemeanor or crime for under 21 to possess tobacco, is that state law, or could we do something in Reading?
We'd have to check with Ray.
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
So that, so that, even if we wanted to, it's...
We could work through our delegation.
Right.
Something that...
But I will make a comment. The gentleman said about the 14 and 15-year-olds smoking on the town hall right over here. I can guarantee if one of our guys shows up and there's a kid smoking over here, we'll be calling the parents and taking the cigarette. If the parents are upset at that, we'll be filing 51A against the parents, okay, with DCF, because I'm not going to tolerate that either. All right? Thank you.
We know you're doing it, aren't you, chief?
Bill, just a second. Somebody's been waiting. Yes, sir.
That's right. Thank you. I'm just going to stand here because I don't have to thank anyone. Jennifer Hillary, 183 High Street. Thank you, Mr. Halsey. I'm here tonight because as I saw the last agenda come out last week, it occurred to me that there was no discussion on the agenda about an override. And it gave me pause, because last year around this time, as I reviewed my notes, this board and the town manager were actually starting these conversations in a substantive way. At the end of February last year, our town manager had given a financial overview at this meeting, and a timeline for the override was discussed. And it was also discussed what topics surrounding the override would be discussed at subsequent meetings. The beginning of March, our town manager wrote an excellent financial overview that went into the papers. On March 8th, the Board of Selectmen actually voted on the October 18th date, and by the end of March, override ethics rules were discussed. And I just wanted to encourage the Board of Selectmen to consider a similar timeline. There are certainly different issues that this board would need to discuss should an override be placed on the ballot in the fall or the spring, which includes, again, a discussion of when they would like the, when you would like the override to happen. And further, how are the Board of Selectmen going to reach out to voters to find out what would make voters support an override in the future? I know that it's been discussed, the amount of an override, but I think that it's not the only reason folks voted against it in the past night. And I just wanted to encourage the board to not lose momentum on this issue. I think since the financial forum in January, and I know that your agenda has been full, that you continue to do great work, but I really would like to see this town continue talking about this issue substantively. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Yes, Mr. Brown?
For information, anybody that wants to file an act to prohibit or arrest children who have supplied cigarettes, they have the right to do it through the state legislature. And he has to file your legislative request. I've filed several bills. They've all ended up in the trash.
Didn't even make it to committee, huh, Bill?
The issue that I was looking for got solved. It was on the open meeting laws, so...
Well, there you go.
But you do have that right. I'm the master of the Constitution, and he has to file it for you.
Good point.
And you have the right to sit at the public hearing. Because my grandson stood on the way out, they don't know who they're dealing with, do they?
My grandson's quite a boy.
Other public comment? Yes?
Dennis, no docs or Beaver Road. Human Rights Advisory, Human Relations Advisory Committee and the school committee. Speaking for myself, I can't resist saying how proud I am of our students, that they had the voice at our meeting and beyond to come here tonight to voice, to explain what they did with the survey. I'm really proud of them. And I also wanted to elaborate a little bit on, I did give a report on last night and included just a lot of what you had said, although I did not read the letter. And I just wanted to elaborate a little bit about what the schools have been doing in order to empower students and make sure that we are addressing the needs of our community. The schools have core value and character education programs in every school, have extracurricular clubs like AWAD, the GSA, and student government, speakers like Michael Fallon, Rosalyn Wiseman, Holocaust survivors, and even this last weekend's drama production, 1776, which intentionally tried to empower our students and get them thinking about positive conversation and perseverance. We have homerooms planned with the same teacher over four years in order to nurture relationships. And the multiple tiers of student support program and challenge day programs have the goal of having every student connected with at least one teacher on a personal basis throughout their tenure in the schools and beyond. And the biannual risk survey shows that that is happening, that students are connected more than ever with teachers and adults in our schools. Programs and courses like the Real World Problem Solving, Peer Leaders and Missing Voices are also efforts to make the curriculum more meaningful and to connect students with each other across performance levels and strengths. When faced with situations and awareness, the schools have responded proactively. When hate graffiti was scribbled on the walls of a school, the whole school was involved in a combination of assemblies, peer leader programming, and classroom discussions. When a student transitioned gender, the schools called in a consultant from the DESE, did assemblies, worked with students and their family, and offered such compassionate support that the family has publicly thanked the schools for their support and guidance. None of this changes the fact that these students are senior advisors, are senior, truly, advisors, but are senior A World of Difference peer leaders are in the know, and they still feel, and the survey shows, that students want and need more from the town and from the school. Hate is insidious, and if people feel it, then it is real in some way. That is why there needs to be proactive programming, constant outreach and awareness, and sensitivity training. The schools like the town... The schools like the town of police are confined by regulations, but I think that our conversations and the progress we are making is really important. And I do believe that together we'll be able to form a commission or committee, some way for us to work together, to make a statement that our community supports these kids, all of our kids, in fighting hate. So, thank you.
Thank you, lady. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Bob?
The only thing I'll mention is the Selectmen also broke the law on Monday night at a CPDC meeting and three of you showed up.
Last week was a record with three different meetings.
Well, there's no law breaking if no deliberation.
I know. I'm just poking you. On CPDC.
Please clarify that.
Please do clarify that.
I wasn't there on the circus otherwise.
Mr. Halsey.
Do not take out of context.
Chief's here, too.
He might arrest you. I think some important topics, many of our neighbors and other communities in the state are, I'll say, following Reading's lead, although some of them certainly started when we did, to go to the voters and/or town meeting to ask about marijuana, so-called recreational, commercial, really, marijuana. I know there's an election in one of our peer communities today. North Reading is going in the opposite direction. They have a town meeting first, special town meeting, then they're going to the voters. We chose to go to the voters and just have the regular town meeting. There are lots of legal opinions out there, and all of them disagree with each other. So, we're all doing the best we can. Our town council is familiar with, not North Reading, but another community that I didn't mention, doesn't think their ballot question will hold up with the AG. The point is, we're in very, very uncertain times, and Reading is doing its best. You know, we'll hope to get it right. We may need to come back. We don't know that.
Well, don't you think, Bob, as always, you know, the voters will tell us what their opinion is. The AG will tell us whether or not their opinion, whether their opinion will be validated.
Right.
So, you know, however that works, I think the law itself, question four, which passed, it is a law, does say that any action going forward has to be by a vote of the voters. We have one of those on April 4th.
So far, we're the only community going that extra step of asking for a special act, which seems appropriate, given all the uncertainty.
It does.
Yep.
Is your view, Bob, that all the communities are aware of we're all reaching for the same goal, albeit in different ways?
They seem to be asking the opinion of the voters. All the communities I know of are ones that got a no on question four. There may be others, because certainly there's logic. Even if you voted yes, on Florida, still do no on commercial. They believe their voters will vote no again, but they're willing to ask them. They feel obliged to ask them.
Yeah, I think that's where we are. We want to know what, we know how they voted in November. We want to know how they're going to vote on this specific question.
And actually, toward that, as you know, I have no problem asking the voters what they think on something. I just raised a question about, you know, what kind of information are we going to provide to kind of give them the context and why are we doing this and sort of have it not be a surprise when they go to the polls on April 4th and say, what was this? No one talked about it. You know, Dan and I have spoken amongst ourselves, and we're going to try to do something similar to what Dan did on the override, which is just kind of a lack of a better, an FAQ that, you know, Al and Joanne and whoever, hopefully we can distribute that as much as we can so at least people will have the context of understanding, you know, what are the pros, what are the cons? Why am I being asked to vote for this? What happens if I vote no? If I vote yes? Just so that they could make an educated decision. So, you know, we'll be working on that.
And just further on that, you are, now that you've voted on a ballot question, just like the override, we're in a legal period where there's different rules. None of them have any issues like the override does in terms of speaking out. You all have your right to your personal opinion, as do employees, but we have to be careful about using taxpayer resources, I guess I'll say. That does not preclude us from putting facts up on the website. That's a perfectly reasonable thing to do. But it would be improper if any of you or all of you took a side and wanted to put that side on the website. We can't do that.
Right.
Almost like a blackout period?
I think, yeah, I mean, we kind of agreed to that two weeks ago.
Yes.
That we want to put it, voters need to always decide. The ultimate answer is, comes from them.
One thought, that Barry's comment made me think, at some point in our past, Reading has had either meet the town manager, or meet the Selectmen, or throw water balloons at the Selectmen, or something on television.
I think that last one would get a good response.
We've given it a dunk tack, I think, at the town.
I don't want to televise that. It must be a vehicle for us to get some of this messaging out on a regular basis, even if it's five minutes a week in front of a camera, to at least get, notwithstanding the blackout period, it's another way to get it, at least when it repeats. It doesn't get discarded tonight in recycling, right?
There used to be a forum, which was on RCTV, where all five Selectmen and Peter would appear and take calls on the phone. They were all from Bill.
Bill was the only phone.
Now that we have caller ID, then...
Well, we could do a live audience and just have Bill there.
I know where the studio is. Don't forget.
We can't get punchy at this early in the morning.
Sure we can. Okay, that's it.
You're good?
That's all. Thank you.
So, it looks like we have an appointment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
This evening, the Volunteer Appointment Subcommittee interviewed two candidates for the Council on Aging, Joan Coco, who is a 44-year resident of Reading. She's been active down at the Senior Center. Her husband's been very active in town politics, her husband Dick. And Janice Stafford, 13-year Reading resident with a legal background, great interest in pro bono work for the elderly and the poor. So both candidates presented tonight, and we have made, I'll make the motion as we have recommended. Moved that the Board of Selectmen accept the recommendation of the Volunteer Appointment Subcommittee as follows. Joan Coco to a position on the Council on Aging with a term expiring June 30th, 2019, and Janice Stafford in associate position on the Council on Aging for a term expiring June 30th, 2017. It was a difficult decision, but we felt we'd go in this direction, and Janice certainly would be a prime candidate to move up should there be any other...
Both agreed that they would take either position.
They did. We asked both.
Any further discussion? We need a second. We don't have a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Two good candidates. Lucky to have them both.
Yes.
Always happy when the volunteers come. If I hear no other discussion, then we'll, all those in favor? Okay, 5-0. On we go. Sorry, we're running a little late, Colleen, but you're on.
Hi, Colleen.
Good evening. Have a seat. Want to sit down or do you want to stand?
Oh, well, I was going to sit.
Thank you for the public comment, too. We do appreciate you coming.
Have a good evening.
By the way, Paul, I have just immense respect for your ability to take minutes because I look at my notes after two and a half hours, I've got about this much. I don't know how you do it.
They were succinct.
It's the reason we don't pay you anything.
That's right.
Before I start, I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to go down to the American Public Power Legislative Rally down in Washington. It's the first time I've been. Had an opportunity to meet with all the senators and the congressmen, Moulton, and to discuss, you know, where the municipals are with respect to all of the changes that are going through ISO and those things that affect the independent operating utilities or investor-owned utilities, and to make sure that they understand our exemptions and, you know, and to protect the locally controlled and locally owned municipals throughout the state. So it was a very enlightening, it was a very enlightening trip, so...
How many independently operated municipals are there in the state of Massachusetts?
There's 42 in the state of Massachusetts. So, it was a great group and it... But we don't always have the opportunity for FaceTime with the ISO. You know, they meet on a regular basis with the congressman, and so it's, the American Public Power does a rally throughout the country to make sure that they understand that, you know, we're vertically integrated, we're not set up, you know, we don't have a large rate base, and we do have a lot of exemptions from the different types of regulations that are, that control the...
How long does it take?
Three days. It was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Okay, well, thanks for having us. This is our second biannual meeting. So far, we've met with each of the town managers, and this complete, this tonight will complete our third Selectmen presentation. We have one more to go, which is in North Reading, and that's scheduled for April 18th. I don't want to reiterate what we've done because we have the pleasure of presenting a more, you know, fine-tuned presentation at the town meeting. So I just want to go through some of the highlights of things that have been happening since that. I do want to start again with just reiterating our shred the peak campaign. You know, we try to reach out through Twitter, reverse 911 emails during the summer. We have a number of peaks, and that whatever is the annual peak ends up setting the rate for the entire year as integral to the rate setting. So, we invite our customers. We've gone from, you know, maybe a couple hundred Twitter, all the way up to 900 and something so far. So we're reaching out to a lot of people, and, you know, that curtailment during the peak hours really does help everyone in the town in everyone's rate. So we're going to continue that campaign.
Do you have a chart you'll share with the periods of time during the year when you've been above your intermediate load? Do you have a way to show that? Is that part of your slide?
Well, typically, I don't have that slide with me. We can certainly send you one.
That's fine.
But typically, we'll have, I think last year we had several peaks. So, okay, they call it, this is going to be our peak, and then maybe a couple days later, there's another, there's a hotter day, and then there's another peak. So there might be five or six peaks, and then the ISO will say, okay, this is it, and whether or not it's coincident exactly with Reading, and then it's calculated out from there. But, I mean, Dan will go through quickly the number of programs that we have on how we shred the peak. We have some that are internal, we have some with our customers, with our residential customers, so we work with all the rate classes, including taking responsibility at our MLD to make sure that we can lower it as well. So, I have with me tonight Jane Parento and Hamid Jafari. They are my assistants and the directors of our largest divisions, Integrated Resources and Engineering Operations respectively. And I would like to give them an opportunity to speak on some of the RMLD successes under their direction. So I'm going to turn it over to Jane first.
I can just speak right here. Is that fine? Thank you. Thank you very much. So some of the things that we've been working on in Integrated Resources is community solar. In a couple of slides, I'll tell you what the, an actual project that we have up, and it's installed, and we have membership in that. But we also are reaching out to the four communities that we serve, and if there's an interest for us to partner up and to explore opportunities to use town buildings or facilities, we're more than happy to do that. And Colleen will follow up with Bob if that's something that the town of Reading is interested to do in the future. If we were to do an RFP, we just want to emphasize that the financials are really dependent on the site, the structure of the roof, how large the array is, the type of array, whether it's a canopy roof mount, that all plays into the financial incentives. And it's very important to realize, because we're a municipal light department and we're vertically integrated, vendors cannot come in and supply electricity to our customers. So the light department has to buy the offtake of the power, and either the town or a commercial customer would receive either roofing, infrastructure benefits, a new roof, a lease payment, and the town would be, receive property taxes for that equipment on top of the roof. So it's important that all three components work collaboratively so that it becomes a workable and feasible opportunity. We are working with, we do have a commercial site in Wilmington. We have a 1,000 megawatts where we have 500 customers within our service territory who have signed up for community solar. There's been about 169 Reading residents who have participated in that, and that's pretty reflective of the customer base. It's about 34% of the 500, and that's reflective of the demographics of how many customers in Reading versus the surrounding towns.
Dan, did you just say that the solar output from that project is 1,000 megawatts?
A thousand kilowatts, excuse me. Excuse me.
That's like a power plant.
Yeah, I apologize. It's one megawatt, Dan.
Thank you.
At high noon in the summer.
Yes.
Two questions.
Sure.
Do you have a total cost of ownership assessment for that plan or any similar plan that would show not only the commercial cost, but the operating cost as well as the cost of decommissioning? And for example, the net effect, the effect of net metering on the pricing paid and the benefit delivered? I'm just curious, because one of the big questions here is what are the real economics? You don't need to give it, I'm just curious if you have one, we could get later.
Yeah, we've done, we'd be happy to share that with you. We've done some preliminary on some of the, some of them are cost sensitive, so we couldn't take a specific project and divulge to the financials of that. But we can give you kind of an overview of general what we've seen in the solar markets.
Does it work without net metering? Do the economics favor installation of a solar array in New England without net metering?
Well, it works for us because of the way we're structuring this project. So the way we've structured community solar is customers actually are buying or are responsible for the cost and benefits of that power. So if we take the example that we have in Wilmington right now, we've signed a purchase power agreement for the offtake of that power, and it's at a slight premium over what our average costs or our fuel charge is right now. So during the first year, it's projected that those customers will pay approximately a $5 premium for that benefit of that solar project within our service territory. It's also projected, because solar is on during our peak period, which is the summer, those participants who have signed up for that project would receive the benefit in terms of the capacity and the transmission savings associated with that. And so the models that we have forecasted over a 10-year period, those customers are forecasted to receive overall about a $300 payment above and beyond the $60 premium that they're paying in the first 12 months.
So you're pricing it just above the cost of fuel to generate the same amount of capacity?
Correct.
Essentially an extension of the power production base?
Correct.
But you don't have the capital cost to build it or the cost to decommission it, net total cost of operating?
No, because the developer owns the solar.
I see.
The RMLD does not take ownership of that.
You're not bearing that cost either?
Correct.
All right. Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
I know the economics change all the time, but how do tax credits play in now? Are they a factor?
They are a factor, and I think they've been extended for the tax incentive credits through the end of 2017 or 18, and it all depends with the new regime. But they, but those are definitely factors, along with the state incentives for the SRECs, and that is being changed as well. So it's a moving target, and, you know, one project may not be exactly the same as the second project because of the timing and the market and the infrastructure.
Did I understand you to say this is actually generating RECs as well, this program? Renewable energy credits?
Correct, because it's solar.
And are we monetizing those, or what are we doing?
The vendor retains those in order to finance the project.
So if I can follow, at one point, I don't know if it's true today, we needed the third partner for that reason, was the tax credits. It doesn't do you any good, it doesn't do us any good. Otherwise, we could own the asset. Of course, we then wouldn't get property tax either.
We also have the expense of installing it.
Absolutely.
So they keep the RECs to pay for the...
The capital.
The theory is that the tax credits are worth more than the cost of installation.
Correct.
Because everything else is internal to us.
Correct.
You won't pay in the operating cost, but the magic is in the RECs.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry for the question.
No, no, those are all great questions. Going on to the cost of service, when Colleen came three years ago, we had a mid-year rate increase, which was very problematic for a lot of the communities we serve as well as our customers. Colleen has installed a cost of service requirement every three years. This is the year that we're actually doing the cost of service. We're in the process, as well as the town, of doing our annual budgets. Those are being put together and put into the model for the cost of service, so those will be presented with our, both our operating and our capital budget to our Citizens Advisory Board as well as our board. Per the 20-year agreement, those budgets need to get out to the CAB by March 31st, so we're working very diligently and in tangent with the cost of service. Based on last year's preliminary six-year model, we're estimating a approximately 3% to 4% overall increase in our cost to our consumers beginning on July 1st.
That's 3% in year one and it carries forward, or 3% cumulative?
Nope. Just 3% for that year one.
Just a step function and it's...
Correct.
Can you, can you sort of lay out, even with that rate increase, and we have one last year and we have one this year, what the comparative cost of electricity is to the average homeowner?
the average homeowner in Reading with RMLD versus if we had, you know, another carrier or like with Stoneham or Wainfield has their own.
It's significant. If someone who has served, who uses, this is just a December comparison and again, rates change for us on a monthly basis because of the fact that our fuel, we were tracking our fuel and we have a deferred fuel reserve cash account. So in the, in the wintertime, it may be up slightly because of the gas shortage within the New England and then it decreases this month, it just dropped by a quarter. So they, they change somewhat-
Is that a revolving account? Is that the way to think of that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a way to stabilize our fuel charge.
Stabilization, yeah.
Correct.
Right, thank you.
So we don't have huge spikes for our customers.
What do we do with water rates?
So for example, in December, an average customer who used 750 kilowatts paid $110 to their RMLD for their electricity use. If they were in national grid service territory, they would spend about $153 and if they were in Boston, Edison's, it would be 148, so.
And since all this power comes from the same dam or the same source or the same, similar arrays, this is all essentially better operating costs. You guys are, you're starting with the same raw materials, right? You're paying largely the same fuel cost to generate it or to buy it. So the, the cost down, the thing Barry's poking at is you guys are just better delivering.
Well, it's twofold because investor-owned utilities are no longer vertically integrated, so they have to go on the spot market every six months for standard offer. So their model is slightly different than what we're allowed. We have a portfolio of resources-
I see, you can buy when it's marketed.
That we can manage and then those savings, again, power supply for our customers is a complete pass-through. RMLD does not make any profit on the power supply, so we negotiate the best deals that we can and pass those savings on to our customers.
So I have a question for you. So how do we take that information, which I know, I know that information. I don't know if, first of all, I'm glad to hear we're saying it when a lot of people actually watch this, this broadcast. I'm glad people get to realize the efficiency and the cost savings that you're delivering. So my, my next question to you is, how do we partner with our economic development officer to take this, take this information and take this show on the road? Because, you know, when you think about it, there are really three things that cause developers to look at major projects. And, you know, one of them is transportation, the other one is location, and the other one is energy costs and the kind of person that, you know, should be locating because of transportation and location happens to have the best deal in the state, I think, on energy. So I'm suggesting we need to take this show on the road.
Here's our show. This is, this is actually a slide that we used a couple of years ago, it's been, right? And we went to Wilmington and Osrim Silvania was going to relocate to five different towns. And so Jane and I went in and we went through everything that we had to offer and they ended up picking Wilmington, which was great for economic-
I bet this was a driving reason for that to happen.
It was.
I've heard that from other towns.
It was. And, and so, you know, we got in, you know, when we were discussing it with them, we went into each one of these in detail so they could understand, you know, where their production, they were going to start off with businesses and then possibly add production going down. So we're hopeful with our key accounts program and everyone in Jane's group that we nurture that, you know. I have a slide right here that Jane can go over as well. These are some of the efficiency and peak reduction measures that, you know, we have the incentives with our customers that if they want to reduce during peak, I mean, if they can shift their, their operations or curtail, you know, the, you know, we were able to provide a benefit back to them on the money that's saved. We also have a 2.5 megawatt generator-
A kilowatt.
Megawatt.
Megawatt.
Diesel.
Gas, gas, yeah. That's getting installed in North Reading in June.
By June.
By June. So that'll be like something that we can, you know, control and then, you know, we offer programs to our customers so that they can control. So we have a kind of a, you know-
Portfolio.
Portfolio.
Well, you know, intuitively, I know all five of us talk about what you do, you know, when we're, when we're trying to talk, you know, talk to, you know, developers about the right kinds of projects they have here. So I think the idea of, I mean, knowing it intuitively, saying it is one thing, putting a professional presentation together, we've got now a person that we've brought on our team and you already have a team. So I think it would be very important for us to partner at this point-
Right, absolutely.
And take the show on the road.
We're actually meeting, I mean, a lot has come out of this legislative rally and, you know, because there's a lot of changes coming down the pike. As we talked last year, capacity and transmission is increasing. We're at the end of the pipeline, so this particular area gets hit with a lot of the highest rates in the, in the country and we just try to mitigate that, especially if, as I said, if they start trying to put things on to the ISO or the ISO starts changing things that could adversely impact us. So we're working-
Are you referring to the long-term plan of the state to rely on hydropower and offshore?
Yeah, those, yeah, we're going to be talking about those who are supposed to meet-
Are you going to go over that when you're presenting?
Yeah, I just, no, I just wrote letters to all of, everyone in the state on that issue and we have some meetings coming up on that.
What is your position?
Personally, or on, okay, well, there's a lot of municipals that, not a lot, but there are some municipals who feel like taking the, taking a declarative judgment stance on authority to say we're exempt from that. And, and while the RMLD is, is part of that, I, we've also written letters to say, but we would like to sit down and discuss how we can tell you how we can get there instead of you telling us how we're going to get there. Because the authoritative approach, and I think Jane and Hamid are both with me on this, the authoritative approach is, is fine, but it's, it's not necessarily best business practice and it's, it is going to come down the pike and I'd much rather lay out our own roadmap than have someone tell me how to do it because then it's going to be tough and it's going to be expensive and, and so that's my approach, that's the letters that we're sending out. But tomorrow, we're meeting with Peter Milano, who is the state's economic development-
Right up here, right up here. Yeah, Mr. Economic Development.
Right up here. Right up here.
Power and development.
So Peter Milano is meeting, we're, we've kind of teamed up with Energy New England and Vin Ragucci that lives in North Reading and we're going to be meeting with the state. And certainly each of the towns that we service has a different perspective on economic development, you know what I mean? You know, Linfield is different from Reading and different from Wilmington, whatever. So we're very careful to make sure that we work with the towns to see what the towns want to do. One of the meetings why, reasons why we're meeting with Peter is to really just find out what the state's processes, what, what are the elements that they look at when they're placing someone or whatever so that we're able to provide them with our lists, you know, so that when they come talk to the town, it's kind of, it's kind of a dialogue that's already occurring between, hi, I've never met you. Hi, Andrew, nice to meet you. I'm Colleen, this is Jane and Hamid. We're on our biannual RMLD update. So that's, do you know Paul, Paul Moreno, Peter Moreno?
Peter Milano?
Milano, that's it.
Yeah, we're getting lunch next week.
Oh, lunch, oh, we got him first then. We got him tomorrow. So I'll have Jane give you a call and we can give you some feedback of our-
We can run it afterwards.
Meet, okay, great, great. Okay, I'm sorry, Jane, go ahead, take you to get back.
Oh, so as Colleen said, when we met with Wilmington and Osrim and they were contemplating whether they wanted to locate in New Hampshire and Wilmington or another facility, we kind of went over some of the programs that we have. And so RMLD's commercial rebate structure is based on peak demand reduction. So we'll give commercial customers up to a $50,000 rebate depending on the application and how much peak reduction that, that benefits RMLD as well as all our consumers. We have a commercial lighting initiative program where we'll pay up to $20,000 for LED lighting upgrades. We've worked with the town, we did the Joshua Eaton School, we've done some buildings. So we work collaboratively and that, commercial customers are able to get $20,000 per year to make those upgrades. So we would welcome that opportunity to investigate other opportunities here in Reading. We have, we're rolling out a residential appliance rebate program right now. One of Colleen's missions is to kind of go paperless. So right now, the rebate program is if someone was to buy an energy efficiency rebate, they have to print out a piece of paper, fill out the application, mail it into the RMLD, it's very cumbersome.
What's wrong with this picture?
So we're hoping to outweigh a web-based online system where people can go submit the information and it will be more efficient, more productive and it'll be better for our consumers.
One of the problems we have with conservation, like putting LED lights in, is it actually raises incremental rates. You must have the same problem, people buy less power, you have to put your fixed cost over a smaller burden pool.
Yep, and that's why we have programs like our electric vehicle charging station where we're trying to promote kilowatt hour usage off-peak. So what we're doing is if that really takes off, that could be a very beneficial factor in terms of increasing kilowatt hour sales for the RMLD. So we could spread those, continue to spread those costs over a larger-
I guess that makes sense. I was just confused why you'd want to turn lights off on one hand and sell power differently on the other hand.
Well, because it's just when you use it. So just that peak period is, it's a short window of time where we're charged a large amount of money to carry that for an entire year. But if you get heat pumps and you're able to use, if we can take away from the oil company during the winter period and sell electricity, it's more cost-effective, it's more efficient. And so we're exploring opportunities for RLD, where do we go in the next generation? Because you're right, efficiency erodes our kilowatt hour sales. And if you look historically, our sales have been flat to declining over the last 10 years. And so we're looking at ways, you know, the model's changing. What's going to be the next thing for us to sell more kilowatt hours?
And that 50K number savings you mentioned earlier, what's that as a percentage of savings? It's $50K, but in terms of the total spend, how much does it reduce? It's 50K of what larger number?
That's, that's the maximum rebate that we'll allow. So for every megawatt that we're able to reduce based on current capacity and transmission charges, the RMLD saves about $192,000.
No, he said the $50,000 rebate.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give them-
For every megawatt.
For every megawatt and so-
It's power, not energy.
Correct.
You may know this, but we are working actively with North Reading to furnish MWRA water, which should make their industrial growth capacity surge in North Reading.
Right, we actually heard that and that the Selectmen were very involved with-
Yes.
-North Reading being able to connect and, and that was-
We figured out that mixed water and electricity.
Yeah, great.
Perfect.
One thought that triggered John's comment, this is a wonderful pitch, but it almost takes somebody that knows the nuances and the details. I almost want a headline that says 50% lower energy cost when you move to Reading. It's, it's the, it's part of the Andrew pitch about why Reading and it's probably on page three or four that says lower energy cost and the bumper sticker reads, whatever it is, 30% lower cost, 40% lower cost in Boston or Haverhill.
Right, right.
Let's go back to that-
It just grabs the eyeballs, right? And then you continue the conversation.
I was, you want to talk about the Volkswagen? I went by it.
Oh, yeah. As a result, as a result of the Volkswagen settlement for their admissions, they donated $2 billion for-
Donated.
Donated, excuse me. I'm sure they're required to pay, excuse me, my words aren't coming out appropriately today, $2 billion towards non-admitting fuels. So that we're working with the Massachusetts DOE R and what they're doing is they're doing quick, a quick win programs for electric charging stations where they'll pay the full cost of the station plus installation. So we submitted preliminary proposals for 10 different stations. They did first round, they're going to do it in 30-month increments. So in the first month, the only municipality that was selected was Wellesley because they actually had a site right on the highway. And so they're looking for easy access on and off, which, which is very beneficial, especially on Walker's Brook Drive, right off of that. And we looked just kind of down this end of Main Street as well. So we said, we submitted some preliminary and we're hoping to hear back from the DOE R.
Are you limited to charging stations? I would think you'd go right after kind of bulk storage and try to do some more load shift.
There's also grants that we're applying for that have a combination of solar EV charging stations and battery storage. So there's, there's a lot of opportunities out there and-
Can any of that $2 billion be used for that or no?
I think that's just charging stations. Because, because it was Volkswagen.
Get those Teslas going, all right.
Correct.
Open a dealership.
Yes, we'd like economic development, we want data world built behind us.
Exactly.
Data server farms, dog, dog park.
We're going to do our best to get the-
Research, research, there's a certain kind of-
Triangle Park right out there.
That's what we need, data world.
There's a certain kind of project that is perfect for this town.
RTP Reading Triangle Park has a ring to it, right?
It comes in a couple of different flavors, actually.
Yeah, well, data server farms behind us would be perfect, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Call it data world, it'd be great.
They don't use a lot of public safety. Yes, Bill.
Colleen, you, you people are sitting on some of the most valuable property in this town. Has there been any thought to moving out of that site and perhaps into a less expensive site?
I guess we were waiting to see, that's one of the areas that the MAPC and the town did an economic development study on.
If you're going to make-
And, and yeah, the building we're in was knocked down, so, but we're, and so we're very, like even with the capital budget, we're only looking at small repairs, you know, fixing the roof and we did do a little painting, but we're, we're very careful about not doing anything to see if that area gets developed.
You've got considerable nice lot of property up underneath, the power lines up on West Street, it's also a budding property and West Street has been certainly a vague for a good many years and you could probably fit everything you could put up there.
Is that true? There's property on West Street. There's a poll yard, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the wetlands or, I don't know the layout as far as, as far as building property, but-
We'll, we'll fill in for you.
Okay. But just rest assured that we're only doing the bare minimal, waiting for data world anyways.
It's very enlightening, please continue.
Okay, so now I'm going to turn it over to Hamid, we're going to talk about, any more questions for Jane?
Yes, I'm Hamid Jafari, Director of Engineering Operations and pleased to do the presentation of the maintenance programs and also some of the programs that RMLD has initiated. We continue to address the maintenance required in order to maintain our assets in, at RMLD throughout the service territory. These are the based on, basically the programs based on the best business practices and models in our industry. So we have a comprehensive substation maintenance program, basically cyclic testing of the substation equipment within all these three substations. We've got the station three, station four in North Reading, station three in, station three in North Reading, station four in Reading and station five in Wilmington. And every three years, we do the cyclic maintenance of the transformers, the breakers and some of the other assets, we do them on electric battery testing within a year, just to make sure we keep them up to improve their reliability. We created our technical services group division three years ago, four years ago when Carl and I joined RMLD and now I'm proud to announce that our team now they're full, they're trained and they're still being trained in order to take some of the testing initiatives and purchased the, the testing equipment for them. So it's going to, it's going to save us substantial testing costs that we have, we have to hire outside consultants to do. So tech services is going to be able to do those in the future. We developed and revitalized the system maintenance program. We've got eight maintenance programs basically in order to maintain our assets in the best operating conditions. Transformer replacement program, this is something that, you know, we noticed that we got like about 3,600, 3,800 transformers and about 1,800 transformers that are aging, they are approaching, the transformers over 20 years of old service, basically, they're going to have to eventually phase out. And we have started the transformer load management depending on the load and the age combination. So far, we've replaced 332 out of the 1,866. We have a pole testing program, which basically we own 60, the custodial of the services, custodial of poles in our service territory, about 6,500 poles, which by law, basically we test 10% of our custodial every year, every year. And within 10, 10 years period, we have to basically make sure that all 60 half, 6,500 poles are tested.
I have to ask you, how do you test the poles?
Structural integrity? Structural integrity?
Oh, yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a resistant test that, you know, we do, and the probes that we do with the bottom of pole, and we, we measure the, the moisture of, and how much it tells us what the, there's also sonar capability that's a new technology, that the sonar, you could tell whether the pole has inside has rotten or decayed.
I see, thank you.
So, we do that too for the public safety and the safety of our employees. So, so far, you know, we've had all of those double poles that you see, and the result of the construction, operating poles, as well as the result of the, the testing program that we have implemented, and we found quite few poles that basically they failed to condemn, and as soon as we find those, they immediately being replaced.
Do the telecom people work in a timely way? That's kind of a joke.
That's other, this is our biggest challenge, because, you know, Verizon is getting out of the business, pole business, they're trying to get into the poles, and they've approached us too for initiating, but taking over. They had, they don't have the maintenance program like us, we do, you know...
They do no trimming.
Take them seriously, yeah, that's, that's the problem, that's part of the problem. Other maintenance programs, programs that initiated, in order to maintain our underground assets, the manhole inspections, we have done nine hundred sixty-one manhole inspections over, but we have about twelve hundred, so we've got about approximately forty more left to do three hundred almost. So, and throughout this inspection, we found some problems that, you know, we immediately either addressed or they're scheduled to be addressed, so to make sure we increase the reliability. The three trimming, it's a three-year cyclic program, and through that, you know, our strategy is to do the main feeders, main lines, main roads first, and then we get to the laterals, so we can keep those clear.
So, I have a question for you. When, as, as the snow was coming, we had that little week's worth of snow, and, and, you know, on one of those storms, we knew it was going to be heavy snow. There was somebody wandering around my neighborhood with a computer, taking pictures of the trees.
Yes.
And now, is that you guys?
Yes, we got DRG David.
I thought it was a great idea, but...
David, it's a contractor hours, they're collecting information for GIS.
Yeah.
We have, we're collecting data, as you know, the, well, you have a GIS, but the GIS wasn't maintained for so long, so the data was kind of, you know, we couldn't rely on data. So, Colin and I, we hired this DRG group to, we can collect all our assets and create a new database, so we can maintain moving forward. And that project is underway, so you see these guys, they're going around the neighborhood.
So, it wasn't tied to the weather coming in, in the trees, it was just part of a bigger program.
Exactly, part of the program, yeah.
They didn't have a snow clause, get out there and...
Yeah.
I just thought it was, I thought it was ironic that we were, and there was a lot of trees that hang over the, as you know, I mean, our, we are the city of trees.
And that's part of the problem, they're, they're causing, they're posing their reliability threats to our system, because most of the main roads, you've got these large pine trees, shallow roots, and, you know, with one, the wind and storm, they come down and they make extensive damage to other, you know, assets, the pole, pole, they come down and, you know, but that's nature, you know, you love the nature.
Hameed, a while ago, I seem to recall you had a ten-year, you cut to anticipated ten-year regrowth. The amount of growth around the...
Yeah, the growth, what, what we did, we, when I came on board, it used to be five feet, and we increased that to seven feet.
I suppose it was ten feet.
Yeah, yeah, there's some utility, they do aggressive, but this is a three-city of America, we have great respect for that, so we go seven foot, you know.
Eight feet.
So, it's not a full hair length, that's all.
Yeah, so we know how sensitive the people are, we try, you know, to...
It's not a buzz cut, it's a totally full one.
Try to keep everybody happy.
Good luck.
Thank you. Porcelain cutouts replacement, approximately ninety-one percent replaced, and we got a quarterly inspection of the other line, thirteen-eight KB and thirty-five KB, that other crews continuously cruising around, if you see them, they're driving around, they're going here, they're, they're patrolling the lines, looking for signs of trouble or, for premature failures, so we can get to them before they happen. Infrared scanner, the substations and major underground, this is a new program we offer, and believe, and this program has saved us so much, you know, the, the trouble that, you know, could have caught, be, be very costly. With the infrared camera, we go inside the substations and find the hot spot, hot spot, the trouble spot, we go to the major parks that are big customers, and if we see a sign of trouble, we take them out of the service and we replace them, upgrade them as necessary. The second remain and services upgrade, this is another program that Colin and I initiated in order to address all the old infrastructure structures of the secondary services, so we can, you know, we can improve those. The next slide is, any questions on those, on the maintenance programs?
No, this is fine, this is actually where I'm going to go.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, good.
The LED street lighting, you know, we got a grant that, you know, over a period of, we started the replacement, the, at the pilot program, FY fifteen, three hundred lights. In Reading, we installed hundred fourteen, so we went around and, you know, to the communities, and everybody really liked them. So, what we, we did, we continued doing that, and the program officially started in FY sixteen, and it's going to end in FY eighteen. Every year, we're replacing twenty-four, two thousand four hundred fifty lights, for a total of, you know, eight thousand, I think, LED ones once we're done with it. So, in Reading along FY sixteen, we replaced nine hundred sixty-one, and in FY seventeen, we replaced five hundred seventy-three...
Year-to-date.
Yeah, lights to date, so year-to-date, and...
What stops us from doing more of those, or doing it more quickly, is just...
No, we're going to do that, no, well, the thing is, we got, we got a program that, you know, we do all that reliability projects that we're going to have to do as well. So, we are installing sixty-five lights a week to our, our communities.
And that's the entire fixture, or just the...
Yeah, we repro, we replace the whole thing, the whole ball, ballast, everything's...
Not, not the, um, not the, um...
Right. Go ahead.
Do we know an average cost savings for these for the town for life?
Yeah, I'm going to let Jane...
Jane is going to go to...
Okay, great.
Yeah, based on the current formula rate that we have, and the different types of fixtures that the town of Reading has, you have fifteen watt, fifty watt high-pressure sodiums, hundred watt, two fifty, and forty. Those are being replaced with twenty-five watt LEDs and ninety-three watt LEDs. So, the projected savings over the course of the entire upgrade for the town of Reading is around fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars.
Per year.
Correct.
Annually.
Annually.
We budgeted, what, was it a hundred and a quarter, Bob? I think I remember from the...
Look, there's a couple parts to it, one eighty, I think, was the total, traffic lights and streetlights.
Right, okay.
And the, what these lights are producing, I know, I know we, we still have a lot of poles turned off, correct? Bob?
I don't think so.
No.
Didn't, didn't we used to have a program where we turned poles turned off for a while?
A long, long time.
Right, we had...
Okay, we've, oh, we've, we've since reinstilled those?
We, when we started the program, I met with the chief, we went around to the ones that were shut off, and we, he wanted them turned back on, so we turned them back on.
Okay.
In North Reading, there was a significant amount that were turned off, and, and now those are being turned back on. So, those have all been resolved and...
Okay, so that number's with all those lights on?
Yes, yep.
Billy, you had a question?
Yeah, who owns the streetlights? I've been told one time that we own them, I've been told that the lights box owns them. Does anybody know who actually owns them?
Yeah, it's the asset of the RMLD, but you, you, you buy the energy.
We, we pay for the energy.
We just pay for the energy. I was told one time, when I was commissioner, that we, the town owns them, so I don't know.
I don't think so.
I was told the town owns some.
I'll tell you what, these LEDs, if you put them in here, you got, you can't turn them all on, you're going to wear your sunglasses. The difference in lighting is stunning.
Yeah.
So, that savings, you said it was fifty...
Fifty-one thousand three hundred.
What is that, what is the before number, the fifty-one thousand savings? I can't see it from here, what is the before number?
I, I have it...
Is it on the screen there somewhere?
There are one of mental lights that the town owns, right?
Hundred and thirty-five before, seventy or eighty.
There's just one streetlight, one of mental stuff that we do not own.
Seventy is from...
Yeah, but the typical overhead...
Yeah, but if you go from four hundred to ninety, so it should be three-quarters savings, I don't get it.
It's hundred forty thousand, hundred three, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred four.
That's what... Is there a reason it's not bigger in proportion to the, I guess maybe you've already installed some, so those savings aren't realized, this is the incremental savings.
No, this is the capacity.
This is the, this is the total, based on what we have in, in, in the, in the...
Thus far.
Thus far.
I see, so that's kind of...
What about the, the capital, the capital that was missed?
Right, so it's, it's about a thirty percent savings because of the reduction in kilowatt hour sales. We've, we've gone to a formula rate for the, for the municipal streetlights, where it's our average cost plus our power supply cost. Historically, what we had was the capital costs of those old streetlights weren't included in the old streetlight rate.
I see.
And so, when...
The old light rate was down here.
Correct.
I see.
Correct.
So, it wasn't as much of a savings, but it was good that we caught it.
No, it's, anything is good.
Not for you, I guess, for us.
The new rate does have the capital cost in it.
Correct, yes, correct.
Thank you, now it makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
Okay, um, go ahead, Hameed.
Okay, and John, this is the new program, basically, that, you know, it's a software program that it's being used by all three bodies, RMLD, Verizon, and Comcast. Basically, it tells you, you know, who, who's got what in the, the service territory and what they need to do, either to transfer or remove the poles. There's something I need to mention, the, it, after this question comes up, that, you know, who owns the pole? The ownership of poles in all four service territories, fifty, fifty, fifty percent Verizon, fifty percent RMLD. However, the custodial is at North Reading, it's hundred percent of RMLD, and Reading, half the Reading is ours, the rest in the communities, you know, it's with Verizon. So, Verizon, they're covering more than, you know, RMLD.
And then you pay them, they pay you, or is it just a, how does that work?
Yes.
Yes, that's right, yeah, that's all the problem.
Does that, um, just, I, I don't mean to interject, but, so what happens with the pole is the custodian sets the pole. So, if we need a pole, or we're building a circuit in their custodial area, we call them, they set the pole, and then the, the engines is ball in court, so electric transfers, you know, then cable TV, then fire, whatever, it goes down. So, the engine is, is telling you, you're next to ball in court to make the transfer.
Yeah.
When everyone's done transferring, the custodian will come back and pulls the pole button. And so, that's really what the custodian does. So, yeah, there's a six oh five eight billing that goes back and forth based on...
Thank you.
Okay.
So, based on the current status in the, in Reading, I guess the double poles, you see that in town of Reading, we got, this is basically the RMLD, we've got twenty-three transfers, and we've got twenty-seven pole bots that, you know, that we need to remove. That's the status. These, these numbers, you know, it's like, you know, they go up and down, they continue to change, because we are making improvements throughout the community, to increase their reliability and improve the operating conditions. So, we've got lots of projects, you're going to see lots of constructions, upgrades, and all of these that, you know, they're coming up in the next four, five years, and, you know, actually, it's a ten-year program, but, you know, we've got in the next four, five years, you're going to see lots of other crews, they're going around, making improvements and upgrades. So, these double poles, you know, we get to them, I really appreciate the, our value of customers' patience, we get to them, but as they come in, the ones that, you know, we prioritize, the ones that they pose a possibly a traffic issue or could be a safety problem, we immediately take care of those, but the ones that, you know, they could go in the queue waiting for transfers and take care of them in a timely manner.
Right.
That's how we prioritize them. So, I just want you to know, and the public to know, that we got a good program, we are on top of that. So, basically, that's it. If you have any other questions, I'd more than happy to adjust.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Two thousand eighteen.
Bring your check, Jack.
Two one grand, here's nothing.
Okay.
It's not nothing. It's not bad.
Do we have a hearing?
We do.
That's a policeman, fifty-one thousand, it's a policeman.
Yeah, it's a good saving. Hearing time, here we go.
To the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice at the board's election meeting in town of Reading. We'll hold a public hearing on March seventh, two thousand seventeen, in the Selectmen's Room, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. Stop sign approval on Auburn Street, at, Auburn Street at Beacon Street at seven forty-five PM. Copy of the proposed documents regarding these topics are available in the Town Manager's Office, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, seven thirty AM to five thirty PM, Tuesday from seven thirty AM to seven PM, and are attached to the hearing notice on the website at www.reddingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing, or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to six PM on March seventh, two thousand seventeen, to townmanager@ci.redding.ma.us, by order of Robert W. Lacher, Town Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. How are we doing tonight?
How are we doing, Chief?
Why I'm here is, we had several neighbor concerns several months ago brought to the Parking Traffic Transportation Task Force regarding speeders in, after school between two fifteen and two forty-five leaving the high school, coming around Beacon Street, down Auburn, taking a right on Beacon, heading down the hill. So, I've sent several officers up there to monitor it. We had speedbar up there at one point. We are averaging a hundred to two hundred cars some days coming through that, that intersection area, and I think one of the neighbors is here tonight as well. And...
What term, timeframe is that, one hundred, two hundred?
It's between, basically, two to three o'clock in the afternoon.
You have to wait hours in an hour?
Yeah, it's a lot of times, you know.
Fuck under my world.
Right, they're all coming out...
That doesn't count, Dan, you live near the school.
They're all coming out, it seems to go any direction of town. They're trying to avoid, I think, the intersection down to that Birch Meadow Drive, and they all go, that seems to be the way they go out to Main Street, is that direction.
Okay.
So, I actually went up myself and watched it one day, and it is a lot of cars in that area, and quite honestly, I'm in support of a stop sign right there at the corner at, on Auburn at Beacon. There isn't one right now.
Where, would the sign go on Auburn eastbound or westbound?
It'd go on Auburn eastbound, correct.
Okay.
Heading towards...
And just be the one sign?
Just one side.
Okay. So, what is it, like a bend right there where you don't have to stop right now?
Yeah, so...
Is it kind of like a unwritten rule?
Exactly. Right, it's kind of a sharp bend, but it's kind of like an unwritten rule for years has been going on, it was, you know, finally, I think it should be addressed at this point, you know.
But you're only putting the stop sign on Auburn, nothing on Beacon?
Nothing on Beacon. Beacon, we have the hill, which, so, yeah, it's pretty, when they're coming up, they, we don't see much concern with them taking a left onto Auburn, like in the mornings, it's definitely much more in the afternoons, leaving the area.
I've almost, I, I don't know how they can manage it.
So, here's what you need to do, you got to tell us who you are.
I'm Amy Ward, and I live at, I live at Beacon and Auburn.
There you go.
Okay. Ground zero.
They come up from Main Street, up Locust Street, turn right onto Beacon, and I don't know how they managed to top speed and almost kill me and my family, getting up and round in that corner, but I don't know how you would put a stop sign there for a hill corner. But they do do it, there's a morning commute where they try to avoid, and I mean, I think those high school parents have forgotten, we have little kids, and they run out into roads sometimes, you know? And the high schoolers themselves literally don't realize, you know, that little kids don't stop, you know, so we've had several...
Do you have Birch Meadow traffic too, and Coolidge traffic?
I mean, we're on the outskirts of Birch Meadow.
It's a cut-through, is what he said.
But yes. So we have Birch, I have Birch Meadow kids.
But you're just starting the problem in the morning going uphill.
Morning and afternoon.
So what we're talking about here is.
One sign cover both?
Yeah, the problem is, we wouldn't be able to mitigate a sign, there would really be no place coming up the hill on Beacon to take a left on Auburn. We would be stopping, like in a snowstorm, maybe, yeah, it'd be running up. No, there's no way.
So they, they do come up Auburn to turn onto Beacon though, and they don't realize that their Beacon Street continues. They almost like kind of just feel like there isn't a Beacon Street there. So they just come like flying around, like not even a stop.
Who's going the reverse of what you just, you just said, okay.
Yes, they do it both ways.
And so this stop sign will.
It's happened a problem.
It, it, it sounds like, the theory is if you acknowledge the stop sign, you stop that.
Yes.
Would you agree with that?
Half of it. We will stop most of it. I, I truly believe. I mean, I.
Sounds like it's, it's one of those funny places that it may be hard to do more than one, right?
I, absolutely.
So we would have to create a curb, and I mean, there is a, I found an intersection in Wakefield in the middle of a residential area with a three-way stop, that like you would have never, like you'd be like, oh, that's, they must have like the same problem as us, so people just flying.
Some kid got hit by a car ten years ago, and then they decided.
Yes, and then that's our thing. They were like, oh, well, there hasn't been, I'm like, there hasn't been yet because I've leapt into the road to grab my child from getting, you know, run over, but.
And obviously with the rest of enforcement on our end too, once the stop sign goes up, and in the mornings, I wouldn't know where in the mornings, there's a problem as well, so we'll definitely look into that for you as well.
Does Beacon go uphill as well, Chief, in that area?
Beacon is uphill right in that area. Yeah, it's a pretty steep hill in that area too.
So you can't stop and never make it?
No way, yeah, absolutely not.
Chief, when you, um, when you put a new stop sign up, is there sort of a period where you kind of monitor it, maybe put a cruiser out there?
Absolutely, yeah.
Do some warning, because a lot of people aren't used to it and kind of just.
Yeah, written, absolutely. It's gonna be a warning for a few weeks, you know, absolutely.
Get people used to the idea that.
Yep, one hundred percent.
Assuming you probably reach out to the schools too for that kind of announcement.
We already did, so I think we did back several months ago, reach out to the schools, at least to advise the kids as well.
Okay.
Some, some probably take heed to it, some don't, so, you know, when they get stopped for blue lights, they may.
That's when they get taken heed to, you know.
Is there any way to post it?
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
So I'm Bob Connor, I'm a neighbor of Amy, and I think even though the stop sign, I think it's a great idea, and worst case, people will slow down. They see a stop sign, I know wherever I am in the neighborhood, at least makes me think, okay.
You got a fighting chance, huh?
I gotta, I gotta show stop. Now, what I go through, two miles an hour, at least I'm going to do two miles an hour.
Right.
So I, I agree that this, this would be a great help. And they have, uh, I don't know, he has a little baby and a little girl, and it's a very tight street, as Dan probably knows, and this, I think, would be very helpful.
Is there any, is there any treatment to the, to the uh turn ratio of that road that would help, by preventing kind of the high-speed turn?
You're talking going up?
Yeah, I've got it on Google Maps, so you can kind of see it.
Speed box?
No, not so much that. Does it really help the radius turn? There's a really broad radius turn here. So they can kind of make that turn at relatively high speed. If you made that more square.
Yeah, I guess I could speak with engineering, see what they have, you know.
Kind of see, it's kind of a radius turn, you can kind of do that at high speed, kind of daily.
Yeah, it does look a little bit like it.
Yeah, but it might, it forces you to slow down just out of.
Mm-hmm. You know, you're almost, you're almost taking feather it this way.
I'll leave it to engineering. Just right now, they've already, it's got racetracks on it, you can see it.
Right.
Right.
I think we're agreed.
Yep. It sounds like you want it, the neighbors want it.
Yeah.
Where do we gotta go from here?
Raise your hand.
That's what we gotta do.
Just double check on public comment?
Yeah, is there any other public comment?
Hi.
Yes, please.
Mike Lacy, I live at Beacon Street, and.
What's your name? What's your name, please?
Mike Lacy.
Mike Lacy, okay.
We lived at nine Beacon Street for past four years, and certainness is on. The high school kids come and go. There was one time, I actually contacted Dean, Officer Savio, where the throttle broke the camels back, my wife was getting my daughter into, into the car, driving daycare. And it was a black SUV that came probably two feet, screeching around. So I'm like, you know, it's, it's one thing, we were all teenagers. I mean, I wouldn't be coming up here talking to you guys, requesting this, if I didn't have young kids, but we do. There are a lot of young kids in the neighborhood. And it is a problem. It's, that's that. But thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Move to close the hearing on the stop sign on Auburn Street at Beacon Street?
Yes.
Second.
We're doing that now. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, hearing's closed. Here we go.
Move of the Board of Selectmen, approve the placement of an isolated stop sign on Auburn Street at Beacon Street.
Can I add the words, Auburn Street eastbound, so there's no ambiguity there?
Take that as a friendly amendment.
Sure.
Is there anything we need to do, Bob, to, for the engineering component of this, or is that?
Dutch, you gotta address that and stuff too.
All right.
Need a second?
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we got a five oh there. That's it, good to go.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Good night.
Thanks for everybody's patience. I know we're a little behind here.
You just take two or three minutes.
Right.
Certainly. So we'll take a very brief recess and be back in a minute.
To the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice that the Board of Selectmen of the town of Reading will hold a public hearing on March 7, 2017 in the Selectmen's Meeting Room 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. on water, sewer, and stormwater rates for FY18 at 8:00 PM. A copy of the proposed documents regarding these topics are available in the Town Manager's Office, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Mass., Monday, Wednesday, Thursday from 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Tuesday from 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM. Are attached to the hearing notice on the website at www writting.ma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 6:00 PM on March 7, 2017 to townmanager@ci writting.ma.us. By order of Robert W. Lasher, Town Manager.
Thank you. This is the same presentation you'd seen every year for quite a while.
Mm-hmm.
There's four factors that come into play on setting rates. The first two are budget items, the last two are other things. In terms of local costs, we do a pretty good job managing our local costs. We have some control over that. You can see over this five-year time period, our local costs are about one and a half percent annually, combined water and sewer. Mostly that comes through capital planning, which we have some flexibility to do. But there is, you know, capital you have to do, and we can't just skip it.
What gives rise to the reduction in sewer capital? Is it just we're way ahead of it on sewer?
If we finish something and then don't do something for a year. Their projects are bigger. Sometimes we skip years, so it goes up and down a little more. MWRA's costs are a little bit higher, but not out of sight. Five percent on water, three percent on sewer over the same five-year period. You know, you can sort of see visually, water next year is higher than sewer in terms of a jump. But again, 3.7 percent, this is about 50 percent of our budget is MWRA. Three-quarters in sewer, one quarter in water.
Do you know when the DRI and debt service drops out of...
It's still in the future.
I think it's like almost done, isn't it?
Is it 30-year ago?
I think it's in the twenties somewhere, 2020s. I don't know when. They rescheduled some of it and pushed some forward. I don't know if it was DRI.
And how much will the sewer component roughly drop, do you know?
I don't know that. I don't know that. Their forecast beyond this year roughly for sewer is higher than water, their increases. So that'll hurt us more. Other factors, conservation, I was interested in some of RMLD's discussion. I am suggesting a very slight tweak, just to stay ahead of the conservation efforts, which is worth a little less than a percent on the rates. Here's, you know, she was saying their usage is about flat.
That's incredible.
Look at water.
Wow.
It's down from 780,000 down to 635,000 at a time when the community is growing.
Yeah.
There are more houses, there are some more businesses. So, you know, I can understand why power demand is flat, but this is pretty astonishing.
That's a 20 percent decrease in 10 years.
We used to have pretty good drought this past summer, too.
It's probably not that surprising. All your home appliances are energy efficient. I mean, I told recently...
The toilets have been huge.
Light bulbs are light bulbs, right?
Yeah, let me show you something else, which I thought was pretty interesting.
Probably the biggest component there, right?
See if I can find the summary here. Here it is.
Yeah, that doesn't get much more.
Reading is one of the lowest communities in the state for unaccounted-for water. 1.13 percent.
Does that mean our pipes are good?
Yeah, that means we're doing a really good job with infrastructure. This is non-billable water that's just paid for and wasted. The acceptable guidelines from the MWRA are between 5 and 10 percent.
And so what is, so that's an interesting thing for people who might be watching this to understand, in real dollars, you know, because when people get a little bit upset about the fact that, you know, the streets are drawn up and the, you know, our infrastructure is up to date.
Yes. Well, it's better than other towns, certainly.
Yes. And when I say up to date, I mean, we are working on it.
We have a program.
So in real dollars, the delta between a 1 percent, 1.13, and a 10 percent, what is that in money?
That would only affect the MWRA part, right?
Yeah, we're, well, assuming it would...
Well, they pass that lost stuff over us anyway, so.
We're paying for it, you just have to look at it.
Yeah, we're avoiding maybe 100-plus grand a year in charges.
That's material.
Yeah, I mean, you know, in the long run, we're spending less on capital than we would be by just throwing it out the window. And astonishingly, some of the numbers of some of the communities that I'm aware of, you know, these figures are as high as 15 and 25 percent, unaccounted-for water.
You know, sometimes it's really important for people to understand that, you know, good capital planning, good infrastructure planning is all part of what goes into good budget planning because that pays, you know, a young, a new police officer.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you've got to think about it that way.
Illegal taps would show up here as well, right?
I'm sorry, say again.
An illegal tap that bypassed the meeting.
Yes, they would.
That would show up here as well.
Yep.
Some other towns may have a little bit of problem.
And I don't know how you can get lower than this if we, you know, unless we stop flushing the water mains once a year. So, there's going to always be some.
That comes out of this, isn't it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
This is the first time you've ever showed this to them.
Yeah, we just never thought to show it, and it's really, it's been getting a little better every year, but this is the lowest that I ever remember seeing.
Oh, really?
And this number here, it's a little small, but Reading is 25 percent below average in residential usage of water. The average household used 25 percent less.
If you can show the unaccounted sewer, I'll give you a start.
Yeah, let's not go there.
So, I mean, does it, I don't know, maybe this is a state mandate, but, you know, does it make sense to relieve the water ban?
We can't.
It's not really enforced.
It's not our choice.
Is that...
State wouldn't let us.
Yeah. You're required to keep that.
The statewide water ban, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not really enforced.
It's part of our consent order with the DEP, to continue to do that and do more.
Just for Reading or just for any?
For Reading, specifically for Reading to join the MWRA in perpetuity.
They said we have to have a water ban.
Yes.
Okay, we got one.
Collections, no problems this year, aside from the fact we don't have a treasurer-collector, which comes up later in the night. We have very healthy water reserves. Some of that was because we had capital projects planned and canceled, much like we've seen in the general fund. I'm going to suggest using a little less reserves in water instead of 800, 500 in sewer, instead of using zero, using 450. If you didn't use any reserves, combined rates will go up 12 percent. Remember, we used 800,000 last year, that's why. If you use the reserves I'm outlining, it's 4.2 percent. This gives you a history, recent history of water and sewer rates, and this gives you a longer-term history in terms of the graph, with this being a somewhat, well, a very artificial number because rates went down when we get rid of the discount. So really, this number is a plus 3 percent year.
But it really didn't.
Right. But the message generally is, you know, we had some high years while we joined the MWRA, for sure.
When did we join then?
We had, right around here.
Six?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been about 10 years, Mark.
This was a one-time usage adjustment that was a big one, that some of you had to make. Otherwise, generally speaking, after the first year, rates have been 3 to 5 percent, which is the best we could have ever hoped when we joined the MWRA.
Yeah, we portrayed...
We were thinking eight.
Yeah, we did eight.
What would it take in reserves to get it down to, say, sub to 4 percent?
Every 100,000 you use knocks off eight tenths of a percent, so not much. You could do it. Let me just show you a little bit looking ahead. If we use, on average, this amount every year, you're still going to be looking at just under 5 percent. The 4.2 is a little low, and part of it's that usage adjustment, it would be 3.4 otherwise. There's never a good answer. The MWRA's forecast is usually a percent high. We know that, but we still can't pretend otherwise.
But our forecast originally was eight.
So this, yeah, and so if they're forecasting, if they're half this number, 74 and 34, close enough, and they're a percent high.
Half a percent.
Yeah, exactly. So we're back down to the 4.2 area.
Other than canceled capital projects, I understand how we generate free cash. How do we generate reserves of water?
Sell more water. Everybody should use water.
But we're not, but we're selling less water. So we're growing reserves and we're selling less water.
Don't fix that tab.
Right here, where is it? Maybe, there it is. This is a year-to-date figure. We're actually seeing higher usage this year for the first time in a while, but I'm not willing to concede that it's permanent. I think it probably is because of new development. If you just look around, look at the projects, we have more houses. If you look at some of the pipeline...
Johnson Woods gets closer to completion, you know, Reading Woods.
You know, the place down at the train depots, another 75 users or whatever, 65.
I mean, I see Facebook posts, people bemoaning the fact that we're having development and the infrastructure will not support them. Is that categorically false?
That is categorically false.
It's like we can sell a lot more water.
Yeah.
The pipes are there.
And we have fixed costs, so, yeah, half our costs are fixed costs. So, no, we're in, I mean, you know, some of the discussions with our peers, our infrastructure's in great shape by comparison to anyone, honestly. We can support economic development, we just don't have the land.
Yeah.
So that's really it in a nutshell on water and sewer, you know, four-plus percent rates at $10.17 each. And then, just really fast, stormwater. We have one more year of not doing much in terms of changing rates, but I'm going to suggest that this board, in the summer, or perhaps early fall, sit down and really have a meeting with DPW in here and talk about stormwater. Maybe conservation should come in as well, and the public, and just talk about the philosophy of what the Stormwater Fund was set up for, what it should do, what it shouldn't do. We have a much clearer, well, a clearer, I shouldn't say much clearer picture on the NFTs, federal regulations. We still don't know exactly dollars what that will cost, but we have an idea, our town engineer can speak to that. The big wild card, almost 10 years ago, there was some large river cleanup projects put in this fund as a planning tool. I don't know if anyone ever readily thought they were going to be done, but we really should have a discussion and either address them or drop them, I think. Or say we can't do it for 10 years and let's push it out, but that discussion needs to happen. But...
This is more of tying things together.
Yeah, ignoring the river projects, I don't think you can hold the fee at $40 if you are going to do the drainage projects that is required. I mean, people are, you know, on occasion, single-family homes are being flooded, and I think the town has some responsibility to take care of their drainage.
Is that happening, is that happening a lot?
It's a relative term, but yeah, we've identified, we have money every year to spend 100 grand for smaller things. Last year, this year, and forecast for next year, there's a couple of bigger projects that cost more than that, that are specifically put in, and there will be one more set. You see here, three drainage projects, one and three-quarters million. You actually undertake that in this fund, you're going to have to raise it to 60 from 40, for instance. But it's a discussion that's probably worth having. In my opinion, it's our responsibility, whether you charge it through this fund or put it back in the general fund, is a different discussion. Obviously, there's not a lot of room in the general fund, but nonetheless.
The three projects are not the rivers or anything.
No, they're just local streets. I could give you, they're probably in the capital plan, I know they are, I just don't have them. You know, with a real residence impact, that they need some help.
That's definitely happened.
I'd be inclined to do that.
We're seeing people in the last month that that's happened, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, you look at a map, and wherever there is one, Reading's wet. There's a lot of water in this town, and some of it causes drainage problems. So, that's it, in a nutshell. So if you're in agreement, you don't have to set rates tonight, but I don't really see any uncertainty. I wouldn't use less reserves than I asked for, so that I wouldn't have an increase higher than 4.2 because there's ample reserves. If you want to knock more off, you can use more reserves, it's not a big problem.
So 100,000 gets you eight tenths.
Yeah, I'd go 50 in each would knock off four tenths in each. I can actually do the math, I have a spreadsheet here.
Yeah, so that would bring them under three.
We did a 3.9.
Yeah, you know, that seems to me, if we're not going to endanger our reserves, Bob...
They're already healthy.
Sure.
Now, the problem is that you're going to have a spike next year back.
Well, it gets harder in the future, but, you know, here's a picture. You can sort of do the math in your head.
Can you make that bigger?
Oh, yeah. Do it in your head if you can see it.
Sure.
I ran 507.50 as outliers. This one's a little smaller. Cost you 250,000 to knock it down to 1 percent.
Yeah, that doesn't seem like it's a good idea.
My guess is if I do... No, it doesn't. I have to, I make sure I do it by hand. Don't ask me why. Whoops, wrong. Got to do the right field, though. So that knock, you know, 100,000 there knocks this five and a half under, you're already under on sewer, if that's what you're interested in.
That'd be fine.
There'd be no problem using 604.50.
I'd be okay with that.
That would do combined rates, let's see, 964.
I'm inclined to think that that's a good thing to do.
Yeah, that's certainly fine. 1001.
Yeah, absolutely.
You said we had the slide right, the numbers right.
I mean...
That gets you down to under three and a half combined.
Was it 1001 to 1017?
Yeah, I think so. Let's go back and look.
Water and sewer.
Yeah, 1001 and 1017.
Does it make sense to kind of maybe keep things the same this year with an idea of lowering it next year, especially if we're going to have maybe an override discussion? So that, you know, we're not going down this year then to have the water and sewer go up while we're doing an over?
Don't forget, they've gone up 6 percent because the library...
I'm typically opposed to making a deal that way. I mean, you know, my inclination is as follows, that...
This is a user's fee.
You know, I mean...
Yeah, but it still comes out of the same pocket.
You missed my point. A big pushback on the override came from the fact that the average residential rate went up 6 percent on the kind of the library kicking in fully this year.
Correct.
So let's give them some relief in this.
No, I'm not agreeing with this. And I agree with that, because I know, that is what I have heard, particularly over the last several months, is that much of the pushback was tied to the fact that, you know, they knew that the rest of the library was coming in, and they, it was voted for, and that was fine. But between their normal two-and-a-half tax increase, their valuations, their full library, you know, expense, if we can give them a break here, you know, I think we should, just seeing it...
Reserves are healthy, this is the time to do it.
And there was a lot of people that complained last year of the water rates. I certainly heard a lot.
Well, it's the sewer rate that, you know, drives them crazy, and I understand that.
So what would the water rate and sewer rate be at the three quarters?
1001, $10.01, you could make it $10, and $10.17 on sewer.
And what are the minimum quarterly bills?
Double those, so it's...
And those would represent what kind of an increase?
3.8 on water. Oh, let's just use $10, I can't stand a penny.
Right.
There. So 3.7 percent on water, and just under 3 percent, 2.9 on sewer.
Can we do, can we need some more reserves on sewer, too?
Good. I'd be a little more cautious with sewer because MWRA forecasts their sewer going up, and that's three-quarters of our bill, so I'd want to be a little more careful on that.
No, I...
At some point, the debt service and water, and it's still five or more years out, is going to chop 25 percent off water rates.
And that's something that, you know, we've been in the middle of trying to negotiate anyway.
And it's something that's important.
So in five years, our water bills go down because we dropped the debt service, and that will coincide roughly with the schools of the library?
It's close. Yeah, it is close. I forget exactly. I don't have it worked out.
We're eight years out on the score. Well, seven now, right?
It's within a couple of years, I just don't remember.
So it's close, it's close.
And the MWRA's got two points. One is the partial buy-in, one is the full, but close enough.
Okay.
And in water, I shouldn't say this, but, you know, once you're fully funded pensions, you go to, water, we bought in, we bought in.
Right.
There's always infrastructure, but, so I think, I think you're fine, absolutely fine, knocking water down a little bit more. I'd be a little more cautious on sewer.
Well, I think by doing this, we show them a responsible reduced increase, if that even makes sense.
Yeah, and you are seeing economic development at the margins at the very least, so...
Yeah.
We should be selling more water, without a doubt, in the next couple of years. Or at least it's going to keep it level.
Those projects...
At least it'll stop going down.
Yeah.
Those projects are coming to fruition, they're not all done.
That sounds like a caption right there.
What's the minimum?
Selecting lower water rate, just saying.
I have a suggestion to sell more water. I have a suggestion to sell more water in a moment, but first, what is the minimum quarterly bill for these two?
It's double, so $20, and, I'm sorry, yeah, $20 and $20.34.
28. What was the second one?
2034.
2034, $20.34.
Oh, so that's just sort of by, by...
And 40 on stormwater?
Yes, sorry, $40 on stormwater. So $10, 1017.
Or anything else?
Either.
Close the hearing?
That's a public hearing.
Al?
Yeah, he's Tom.
Got anything for us, Al?
What's the final percentage?
3.3 percent combined.
So move that the Board of Selectmen close the hearing on setting the water and sewer stormwater rates for FY18. Good discussion. All in favor? Okay, move that the, move to set the FY 2018 water rate at $10 per 100 cubic feet with a minimum quarterly bill of $20 effective with the December 2017 billing. Do I want to do these all at one time?
Yeah, you could.
Okay. Move to set the FY 2018 sewer rate at $10.17 per 100 cubic feet with a minimum quarterly bill of $20.34 effective with the December 2017 billing, and move to set the stormwater rate at $40 per unit, 3,210 square feet per year, to be billed quarterly effectively with the December 2017 billing. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? 5-0.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This being the subject of water, I wanted to bring up an idea for more consumption. A few of my folks in my precinct have raised the issue of double meters for use in sprinkling their lawns, or deduct meter. And in the past, this board, when I first joined the board, the then-chair took a dim view on this, largely because it would use more water. It seems to me that we're perversely arguing the opposite here, we actually want to sell more water. But the thought of a deduct meter would let folks that want to water their lawn pay the component of cost for the water side.
But no sewer.
And not be burdened with value of a sewer assessment, for which obviously there is none. So it's not only consuming more water, it's more representative of what's going on. I don't know the specifics, Bob, and how it would work with DPW. We can work out the mechanics and the costing and the rating and all that later, but I wanted to see if this board would entertain what it would take to re-instantiate the use of deduct meters to those taxpayers, homeowners that are interested in doing it.
It's something I do here on a regular basis.
I look into it, but remember that there's going to be an offsetting increase in sewer rates to make up for the loss of water volume that you're no longer billing on the source side.
True, but you'll have an increased use on this water side. I understand sewer is the bigger part of it, so you're still probably...
I'm willing to see some modeling done on that, Bob.
Yeah, Dan's right, we can certainly bring in some staff and some data, some surveys. We surveyed peer communities maybe five years ago, you know, we can do it again. There's other topics that can be discussed. I don't know if it sells more water, but there are some communities that tier rates. There's communities with three tiers is the most common.
Increasing or decreasing as you use?
So as you use more, it costs more.
No.
Again, it forces conservation, which again is, Bob, we're not trying to do that.
Well, it also penalizes users of the biggest amount of water, which is usually commercial in some of these communities. Winchester's the best example with hospital.
Yeah, they've got to be using, you know...
I'm not inclined to want to...
But there's lots of options you could throw on the table if you wanted to have a discussion.
How would that, how would that fly with the state ban on water, you know?
How would what fly?
Having, you know, dual metering, where basically...
The ban is only restricting hours of operation, so you cannot have a fixed...
You still can't use it during that hour.
Right.
But if you do, you're paying only for the water component.
Yeah, it's an open question as to whether you would or wouldn't sell more water. I don't know. At the margin, you may.
I would see how you'd sell less.
Right. I would agree with that.
So it can't hurt, and it's more representative for the homeowners.
Yeah, we'll have to schedule a night with DPW and have them tell you from their perspective whatever the pluses or minuses are.
It's also a capital cost, too, right? It'd be a capital cost of doing the meters and...
Right.
Or retrofitting the...
Custom pays for them. There'd be a fee, it's a cost neutral to the...
The billing system has to change because they're going to shoot the meters from the street.
I would think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the way, just need to have a chat about it.
Yeah, the implementation is important.
You know, the right time to discuss it is six months before tonight, so, you know, we'll do it in the next six months, and might take a couple discussions.
We did bring this up a couple...
Just let it, let me know when that's going to pop up.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
So we can get that on an agenda item someplace, a chart.
All right. Okay. To the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice that the Board of Selectmen, the town of Reading, will hold a public hearing on March 7, 2017 in the Selectmen's Meeting Room 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. on amending the FY17 Non-Union Classification Plan at 8:30 PM. Copy of the proposed documents regarding these topics are available in the Town Manager's Office, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Mass., Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, 7:30 to 5:30 PM, Tuesday from 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM, and are attached to the hearing notice on the website at www writting.ma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 6:00 PM on March 7, 2017 to townmanager@ci writting.ma.us. By order of Robert W. Lasher, Town Manager.
Thank you. I just want to read from a memo I put in your packet last week, just so I don't forget. As many or all of you know, our treasurer-collector resigned after a long career here to go to another community. Her last day was last Thursday. Anytime this change, especially in a long-held position, it's time to look at it. We only had a couple of weeks to think about it, but, you know, we did, Sharon and I did spend a lot of time thinking about it, and we listed below four things that we thought were important in a transition. The first was to create an assistant department head position, which this position that Nancy's leaving was, that has more opportunity to be involved and basically helped Sharon as department head. Nancy was very busy, did not have the time. And that's two-pronged. That's finance, but it's also management. It's HR. Both those things are important in managing any department. Our finance department, like other departments, are not exactly deep. So one way we combat that is have a lot of cross-trained people. So you'll see people that work in the collector's office that also work for the town clerk, and they rotate on a schedule. We think it's important to continue to have cross-training. Anytime there's an absence, that means a function can continue. We like the idea of creating growth opportunities for current staff when we can. And I thought it was not a bad idea to try to stay within the budget that's in FinCom's lap. So those are sort of the four parameters. The model that we came up with, that I'll just show you visually. I've highlighted with these colors behind me in green or yellow, the finance department positions. There are also clerical positions that I have not listed. But you can see that right now, we have a treasurer-collector position in this grade right here that's crossed out. We also have an assessor. Now, our assessor is shared with Wakefield, so he's not paid on this chart. If we hired one, this is where we would pay him. This is where the department head is. And then our three assistant positions have been in this grade down here. In F. What I am requesting is to eliminate this treasurer-collector position, and I'll get back to that. To insert in its place a treasurer-assistant finance director to do the things I just mentioned.
Yeah.
To create a collector's position from scratch. That's the half of the job, if you will. And then to increase the assistant treasurer position one grade from F to G because the treasurer will be doing other things other than treasury things to help Sharon manage her department and do finance.
And so you need this person to step up.
So we need this person to step in and fill a little bit more on the, on the finance, on the treasury side. Although, I'm good at math. This appears to be creating a job. It isn't. As I mentioned, there's clerical people in the department. We know what our budget is. You know, we have to first get your permission, then advertise positions. But there is a natural order of promotions that could occur if the people are interested in the positions. And at the end of the day, we would eliminate one of the clerical positions to make this all balance. Also, we have a retirement of our current assistant collector next July. So there's a lot of turnover. We just had our long-term assistant treasurer retire late last fall. So the three top positions below Sharon in the department have all changed or will change in a short period of time. As you saw earlier tonight, one of the more important things we do in treasury is keep the light department working. You know, they buy power frequently. We have to use the Fed wire to do that. There's not a lot of margin of error there when you're buying power. So our role of our treasurer is different than many communities that don't have light departments. She's got a lot more responsibility. In point of fact, our current or former treasurer-collector was spending decreasing amounts on the collection side every year, to the point of very little when she left. Our assistant collector's basically been running that side. So I think operationally, this will give Sharon a bit of a hand.
But we know that that's necessary.
And that's really important. I don't really see any downside to it. We're spreading out and giving opportunity generally to people. If they want to apply for it, you know, they'll have to earn it.
Well, you're not taking anything away from anybody by rearranging this.
No, we're really not.
You're actually creating...
We're creating opportunities for people. Generally, people are, you know, appreciative of that. We are putting up a few more barriers. When you think of finance, you have assessor, you have accounting, and then you have other. And the other in this case is treasury and collections. While they're all financial functions and belong in the same department, you know, you'll know the term from Wall Street and others. It's important to keep Chinese walls between all of those areas. It's very important that the assessor be independent of the treasurer and the collector and the town accountant. It's very important for the town accountant to be very, very independent of any of the rest. All those things need to stay apart. The one thing where we've sort of allowed, if you will, a bit of a close relationship is by having a treasurer-collector. There's a little bit of a gap in there that we haven't had, and it's okay. It's a little better when you have some separation.
And our charter calls allows us to...
And that's, thanks Barry. The last thing I wanted to mention is just by happenstance, a couple of years ago, when the Charter Review Commission, or Committee, I did ask them to separate it just in case we ever thought this would be a good idea. I really had no concept at the time we'd actually need it. But the Charter does now address each and allows me to request a view to combine them, which I did as soon as the Charter was passed. Now, I would need to ask you to uncombine these positions effectively and go back to the way the Charter is written as a default, where there's treasurer and there's a collector. And in terms of sort of other peer communities, there's both models. Reading will be a little bit unusual for our size in having a treasurer, a collector, an assistant treasurer, and an assistant collector. But I think, again, with the light department, that's easily justified. And other people use other titles. Some towns have a treasurer, a collector, and then one person that's assistant for both. I think it's vital that each of those roles has a real backup. We kicked around a lot of models, and if the treasurer's not in, you can't tell the light department, I'm sorry, can't buy power this week. You just can't. The treasurer's also a key role and payroll. And with the schools, the town, and the light department, that's a huge amount of work, too. And then obviously with the collectors, you know, they're collecting water, sewer, and light as well. So there's a volume of work that goes on in our finance department that is higher than our population might otherwise suggest.
So Bob, other than the fact that you wanted to keep the budget relatively the same to what you had at FinCom, you know, is it, are you adding more stress to the folks in there, especially since it's all relatively new people, new functions or shared functions by having one less, you know, one less assistant?
It's the same amount of people, so from that sense, no. It's spreading...
But the help that they would get from that administrative assistant?
No, the assistant collector, the duties will change. Again, to be real simple, there's an assistant collector now that does a lot of collector's duties. If she's interested and applies and gets the collector's job, all right, fine. Her job won't change a lot. One of the clerical people could then apply for the assistant collector's job.
But people's paychecks could change.
Yeah, not much, but yeah.
Yeah, it's an advancement of their career.
So the depth is still good. The overlap is still good. I really, I try to think. I mean, every plan has upside and downside. I really couldn't think of a lot of downside other than people aren't interested in promotions and don't apply, and then you've got a bit of a pickle on your hands. And I could only have a limited discussion with staff because I really, it's not appropriate to do that before the board has had a chance to discuss it. Sharon and I kicked around all the possibilities, and again, there's another retirement coming up. And this seems like a good plan. And I'll be the first to tell you, if a couple of years down the road it hasn't worked, I'll let you know why. But it does seem like with the people we have and the opportunities we have, it's a good plan. I will say that to me, the key of this is who steps into this new number two role? The treasurer or assistant finance director? Because to me, the emphasis is on that second part of the title from now on.
So is that a different skill set that you're going to advertise for?
Yeah.
I mean, kind of someone who was maybe a, someone who's an aspiring Sharon, maybe? You know, someone who's...
They certainly wouldn't have to be an accountant.
They don't have to be a CPA for that job.
No, they wouldn't have to.
But finance background, I mean, a strong finance background is really what you're looking for.
Yeah, again, to be real simple, Sharon will enjoy this because we discussed this with Dr. Dory at breakfast. I said, well, the least creative person at the table is Sharon, and she said, I couldn't agree more. Accountants don't like to be known as creative. We need a creative person in this job. Someone who's financially adept, but very, they come to any one of us and say, you know, you're doing this, you should be doing that.
I think an experienced person is what you're looking for.
Yes, yeah. And I think the help that this person could give the whole organization, all of our department heads, need to be self-sufficient in a lot of ways. And finance is probably the corporate weakness in our departments. If you think of all the people in place, they're good at a lot of things. We didn't hire finance people to be department heads and assistant department heads except for Sharon.
Logically speaking, municipals, municipalities don't do that.
That's a private sector thing generally, so yeah. And you have to plan for when I'm not here as town manager. The next town manager has to be financially savvy, probably will be not at my level, frankly. I do a lot of stuff the finance department could do and should do and will do at some point. So that's why you need a good person there. And it's not necessarily someone who grows and become the town accountant, maybe, but maybe not. So, and it does, it stays within the, within the budget.
You want CPA in the town account? Don't you think?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And this person in this job is not necessarily a CPA.
Right.
Probably isn't, actually.
In some ways, I don't want to say that with all respect to Sharon, yeah. Yeah, I said, we wanted someone a little more creative than you, Sharon. She said creativity is not a good thing in an accountant.
No, absolutely, said the board of directors.
So that's, that's my story. I'm sticking to it. For motions, I think Paul has written them all down. I'm not sure, Paul, if I asked you to have... Let me just read to you what the Charter says. The Board of Selectmen, upon the recommendation of the Town Manager, may combine the powers and duties of the Town Treasurer with those of the Town Collector. The Manager may then appoint a Town Treasurer/Collector. So I guess I would add a motion to separate the Town Treasurer/Collector back to Town Treasurer and Town Collector upon the request of the Town Manager.
Do you have such a motion there, Barry?
No, but maybe we should just do these motions and then do that one last?
Yeah, I could do that last.
Good.
Well, first move to close the hearing, amending the FY seventeen non-union classification plan.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the amendments to the FY seventeen non-union classification plan as follows. One, eliminate the grade J treasurer-collector position. Two, create a treasurer-assistant finance director position in grade J. Three, upgrade the assistant treasurer position from grade F to grade J. And four, create a collector position at grade I.
What's your motion, Paul?
What's the, I better hear that last one again.
Be number five.
Assistant treasurer should go to F to G, not J. I missed that.
That's number three?
Yeah.
Did I read it wrong?
No, you read it right.
No, you read it right. I didn't proofread it well.
Are the others okay?
Yeah.
And what's your one?
Uh, hang on. Collector... Let me just check something. That's, that sounds right.
Decouple the...
Yeah, I think I gave the wrong picture, but let me just look. Yeah, I was right. Those are right. So G is the only correction.
Are we, are you going to add to this, Bob, or are you going to make the motion separate?
The other motion, why don't you do the separate?
Discussion?
Yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'll read a motion. The Board of Selectmen, upon the request of the Town Manager, move to separate the functions of Town Treasurer and Town Collector.
So do we have a motion to that effect?
So move.
Yeah, I don't think Bob can make that motion. He's really...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five vote.
Okay, thank you. Let you know how it goes.
Neither of them want it.
You want me to speed through all the articles and you tell me when to stop and what to skip?
Yep.
Article four. You can see this, this is in your weekend packet. I didn't bother having it for tonight. We're moving a lot of capital around.
Did that come from you, Bob?
Yeah, generally, we're reducing. Paula sent it on Thursday.
Caitlin sent it on Sunday.
Right, that's right, Caitlin did. We're generally reducing the amount of capital in our capital plan because of the high school litigation settlement. We had to make some room for that debt. And also, there's an item that was kind of a gray area, so I actually called it gray area. I put it in words. We own a Metro Fire trailer. It's a trailer that kids learn fire safety by crawling through it. We didn't pay for it, but we actually legally own it and insure it, and so it's ours. So Metro Fire wants to replace the old one and give us a new one, and they get money with a grant. Again, we have no financial role in that. But it seemed important to mention to town meeting, since it's not really in the capital plan, that someone is acquiring a capital asset in our name on our behalf. So I just mentioned it in words. Sharon had not really come across this and didn't know how to address it, but it didn't seem right to put it in our capital plan with a number on it because it's not our money.
But isn't it an asset?
It is an asset, but we can't sell it.
But it's par value.
It's got a value. We have to insure it. Metro Fire gives us a nominal amount each year to maintain it, to, you know, do repairs and maintenance on it. If it's a big repair, they do it. Someone had to legally own it, so Reading owns this one.
So where will you hang it in our record so that it shows up next year and it's not another?
She ensures it. That's all you have to really do. It doesn't have to exist otherwise. In a later article, you see we're going to declare the other, the old one a surplus, so another town on the South Shore can have it.
Camping drill.
Yeah, nothing really going on in water sewer. They did run into some groundwater in a sewer station project over at West Street in Batchelder. They don't think they need two hundred thousand, but seem like a safe number to ask for. These sewer stations are not cheap to do. They were originally forecast around half a million, depending on the size and location. They've crept up closer to three quarters of a million over time. Nothing in storm water for this current year. Next year, they are splitting a vacuum truck for two hundred thousand with the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Article five is moving money around in the current fiscal year, and I'll just jump to the bottom. There's a lot of moving parts. Assuming the schools want to go ahead with a hundred and fifty thousand of curriculum, and I've not heard that they don't, but I also don't think that they voted on it, we'll be using a hundred and seventy-three thousand of free cash.
Did they make the additional request of the FinCom also?
They're meeting with them on the fifteenth to discuss their budget, so I don't know. Gray area. There's also a number in here, a hundred thousand dollars of overage on snow and ice. Who knows what it will be by the time town meeting meets, but that's about what it is right now.
What is the overage?
A hundred thousand on snow and ice.
Wait, we're a hundred thousand over on budget?
Yep.
And it has hardly snowed?
And it's been seventy degrees, well, almost. You know, when you remember when we had that snow, it was intense.
And it was also on, it's always on the weekends.
And it went on for a week.
And it went on for a while. It was, you know, the, the snow on the ground was as bad as it was two years ago for a while.
Do they bribe the streets prior to storms? What was the process? You see the trails in the streets?
They tend to do the hills in advance to pre-treat it.
Pre-treat.
And that's worked out really well for the ultimate result.
It's cost-effective?
Yeah, yeah.
So with the hundred grand, with the hundred and fifty for the science curriculum, you're still only moving a hundred and seventy-three K?
That's what it looks like, yeah.
It's amazing.
Yeah, and there's a small number in streetlights. Next year, we knocked, did knock the budget down a little. There's that two hundred thousand dollar request for the sewer station project. We'll ask for it. If we don't use it, it'll just go back to reserves.
What's the fifteen K that, we're buying, we're buying the, what does that pay for?
What are you looking at, John?
It was for the budget.
Oh, just reducing the budget by fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
What was, oh, sorry. So Colleen's mentioned tonight they're changing ballast. They're changing layers. So that's on their, their spend, right?
No, she showed a pass-through savings of about fifty. Doesn't exactly directly correlate to our budget, but it's in the ballpark. We did knock our budget down a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago by about fifty thousand. I don't really know if it's anticipation or actual, but our streetlight budget is substantially lower now than it was five, seven years ago. We've knocked a hundred thousand plus off of it for a variety of reasons. LED was one of them. They also just started a different way of charging. Article six, that's a prior year bill for ninety dollars and seventy-two cents that went into the fire chief's spam filter.
That's right.
So you can blame him. Here's our surplus declaration, and you can see the Metro Fire is described, not on a list, but we do own it.
So what's going to happen to that? Where's that going to go?
Milton, actually. They're below Reading on the hand-me-down list. I'd just love that. Haven't grown up there. Article eight is OPEB, and in addition to the usual transfer of money, Town Council has strongly recommended we adopt this language and change the way we did a trust. We were one of the first communities to create a trust before there was legislation. Now we're just reverting back to accept the legislation to make sure we're all protected, so it's not, shouldn't be a big thing.
That's amazing. The stuff he catches.
Yeah. Article nine is, is the famous Oakland Road. Thought we'd take another crack at that. I tried to explain in the background what last November was because people came up to me for weeks after that and didn't really understand. Article fifteen was to discontinue portions of private ways. Article sixteen had two parts to it. One was to declare surplus, and the other was to authorize the Selectmen to sell or dispose of the land. Now, Article fifteen passed. Article sixteen did not pass. There was a move to reconsider sixteen to split it in half and effectively just do the first part. That also did not pass. I, I think there were a fair number of people who really just didn't understand.
Not that it did not pass, they did not get to the point to pass.
It didn't, it didn't get reconsidered.
Right.
So this article does what the first part of Article sixteen would have done last November, so...
It eliminates the, the ability to sell.
Could I ask a favor?
Yeah.
Next time a motion for reconsideration comes back from council, can we have a look at it before it gets put before town meeting? Because I think part of the confusion was the wording, the specific word he used, which is very different from the way we do motions. So I think it generated some of the confusion.
It was cozy. My recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, but was also there wasn't really much of an explanation allowed.
Sure, it's debatable.
I didn't think there was much of one allowed or given.
You know what? Reconsideration is totally debatable.
Because I was ready to go up and stand there as was Ray and...
We tried to explain it, but...
Yeah, we just weren't allowed.
Alan was a tad on the strict side there.
Yeah, and that's okay.
I thought he went over the top.
But I just know from the feedback afterwards, a number, and I mean by that more than ten town meeting members, really did not understand what the reconsideration issue was.
We'll make a tight presentation this time.
Bob, there's a style issue here, which is you could describe Article sixteen, sorry.
Current Article nine.
Nine. We could describe this in the way it looks today, or we could describe it the way it looked last year, the way you've done here. I wonder if we're better served, starting with a clean sheet of paper and keeping this in the back pocket when somebody says, hey, what does this reflect last year? But don't go there to start because you're kind of digging up last year over again, and it gives your eyes to you. You guys looking for a third bite of the apple.
I'm sure I agree with that.
You do it any way you want, but I'd rather describe what it is, not what it isn't.
It's a custodial warrant.
If you, if you...
It's to put the thing in the care of custody.
I agree with you, but it was kicked back the last time. I'm trying to avoid the...
If you, if you do that, you guarantee that people are going to ask, wait a minute, what did we do last November?
If we don't explain it, people think then we're trying to...
I think it's better to leave with it and get it out of the way.
I think that it needs to be clear that the town meeting did not want the... I think the town meeting did not want the Selectmen to be able to have the authority to sell without coming back to them, and I understand that.
Yeah.
And I, you know...
And I would say crystal, crystal clear.
Well, I, I know you said it, Chris, in a clear way, Barry. Unquestionably, you did.
Yes.
But it wasn't heard. But it wasn't heard. I mean, it just wasn't heard, and I'm not sure why, but.
And to be fair, in other years, we've been given that, although it's insufficient, we've been told do even more.
Get rid of it.
Yep.
The Oakland Raiders will leave Oakland before Oakland loses Redding.
Probably Oakland road with a tow tag.
Article 10 is to spend more money in the library, and I'll just read the sentence, if this article is needed, the town manager or his successor will have a lot of explaining to do.
I would recommend that we support that.
I would explain, I expect this to be tabled, but I think it was important that you put it in the warrant.
I mean, just real.
There is no plan to use this.
It should be supported.
I did get a call from Bob Lebrecht today that needed to speak with me, but I don't think it's because we don't have enough money.
Okay.
Last I knew, we had spent maybe at most half of this 141,000, so.
Probably could give an update on that anyways, just to.
At some point, yeah. And this could be an article where we just do that, just give a summary.
Just so that people don't like think, oh, the other shoe's gonna drop at some point.
Yeah, God knows, let's hope not. I'm not aware of that shoe.
Will it be done, will the punch list be done by then?
They're down to about 100, which sounds like a lot of things, but they were at like 3,000 or 4,000 when the library opened. So, Amy's really happy. As some of you saw, that local history room is really nice.
Yeah, and the, I mean, people are thrilled about being able to get to the microfission.
Oh, good.
So that's all, you know.
Okay, I didn't know that was fixed.
Can I mention something slightly off topic? I'm still getting calls from the neighbors about the lights being on on holidays.
Yeah, there's a meeting with the trustees, I think, next Monday.
Are they taking it over?
Yeah. Well, it's their building. Let's see, Article 11 is 2.4 million for a sewer station work on Charles Street, that's in the capital plan. Article 12 is the same one the retirement board put forth last November and then tabled. Sharon described it to the finance committee last week. It's a relatively small change, I'm not gonna try to explain it to you, but it's, it's a change from $360 a year to $420 a year of a COLA increase for all retirees above 12,000 or 14,000. But, actuarially, it adds 1.5 million to our pension liability, because it's now and forever in the future. So, the reason they tabled it November is because, you know, there's a bunch of CPAs sitting around and they said, how can this be? How could it be 1.5 million? And then they did all say that. They looked at the math and they suddenly realized it really is, it's really 1.5 million. So, you know, whether.
And which, who are the, who are those CPAs in question?
The retirement board, broadly. You just appointed a new member, so.
Yep.
You know, it's the prior retirement board, but, and, and actually, there's gonna be three new members as of town meeting versus last November, which is interesting. You know, and, and they'll have to produce, you know, present on its merits, whether it's a good or bad idea. Sharon did that again to FinCom last week, and FinCom did not sound very supportive, I'll say, not to prejudge them. You know, adding a million five to a liability at this time is not great, and I will say that if you looked at the distribution of retiree pay, if you could direct money towards the lower end, I think most people would support it. You know, there are, there are a big portion of our retirees making less than $15,000 a year. And no one would begrudge them $100 or $200, I think. But if you're pulling down a 50 or $75,000 pension, and we can't distinguish by law, we have to say everyone.
Yeah, everybody's the same.
So, we'll see how that goes. We're asking to abolish the sick leave and vacation buyback stabilization fund, which has like $30 in it.
Yep.
Under Article 13.
You've been preparing for that for a while.
Yeah, I thought we spent all the money, then it suddenly got interest. Article 14 is the annual affordable housing trust fund. No change. Article 15 is the annual revolving fund, and since the AG has not yet approved our new bylaw, we're pretty much putting the same article out there. We may tailor it if the AG does approve it by town meeting, but it is not necessary. I will say that some of the balances in these funds are so low, I don't, I don't know why we have a town force revolving fund from 2011 that's never been used. I think the town force committee needs to talk about that, because there was a timber clearing plan that they worked on.
It says the balance in the fund is zero.
It's never been used, there's never been any money put in or taken out.
Why aren't we supposed to be selling some timber, like doing some clearing?
Yeah, and I, I don't, you know, Jeff Sager has been the liaison, at one point I heard, you know, much like different markets change, the secondary market for that was declining. But.
With all the home improvement.
If you create a revolving fund and haven't used it for six years, someone's gotta ask the question. So in the next year, I think we'll have to look at that.
So Bob, everything that you've just, I mean, you, you've gone through some things pretty, this is the stuff that we had in our packet to review, so nothing's new.
Yep, nothing's new. No, nothing's new today as of what was in your packet. Article 16 is the budget, such as it is.
Such.
Article 17 is to accept money from the state for Chapter 90 Road, grant money. Article 18, I still need to write up the background, I, I've missed a lot of meetings, so I'm, I'm a little slow on that. But it's the permanent building committee, you guys are pretty familiar with them visiting.
I see, but the only word in there in paragraph four, I can't.
Which one again? Oh, yeah.
Only the three sponsoring businesses.
Yeah. Let's see.
And are we, is the, is the work done with the bylaw committee around that?
I think they still wanna meet, but they, I think, I think it is, they wanna still meet with town council to describe all the, well, some of the bylaws and the zoning bylaws.
Will they be, have that work out of the way by town meeting?
I don't know if it'll be out of the way in time to go to print, but it will be done by town meeting. Ray's been away, and he'll be back Friday.
I think we just need to stay close to that, because I know that they have a lot to do.
Yeah, they have three or four, they have some interest in some of the zoning bylaws, the marijuana ones, they do wanna at least hear from town council, and, and they may wanna express an opinion. 19 is the accessory apartments, that sort of unintended consequence of the apartment up front.
Yep. And that would certainly suggest that we take on a position on that, given that we were prime movers and shakers on that, even though CPDC scotches it technically.
I'll look at something here.
Do we ever get back to that guy?
What?
What are we supposed to kind of monitor that guy?
Well, it's a springtime issue.
Did you even put some yeses and nos on that photo?
I tried to, I couldn't figure out how.
You can do it in paint.
Okay, I'll try that.
Yeah.
I gotta change it to what the articles really are.
Text box, it's called.
It seemed like Articles 20, 21, and 22 called for an overview up front, to say what the heck's going on here. So, you know, this picture kind of summarizes it. If the local voters vote yes, and I couldn't figure out how to make a yes there, then we go to Article 20, if town meeting says yes to that, then we go to 22, if they go to, say no on 20, we go to 21 for a moratorium.
If the voters say no, we go to 21.
The voters for no, we go to a moratorium, it's really not hard.
Right.
I think this visual will help some people.
Well, what's necessary for the voter is the very simple, do we want recreational and commercial?
I don't know if we need to get into that, that from the FAQ, we're just talking to the voters.
I don't think you need to go there.
They're gonna get confused if we.
The voters only need to know about this.
It's germane to the question.
Well, the other thing too, I mean, one of the things is what happens if this doesn't pass?
Well, we'll say there are other options that town meeting can consider without a lot of detail behind it, in fact, that might be.
I think you gotta be very careful of the, what if it doesn't pass thing.
Okay.
I don't think you can go there, actually.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't think it's a very complex issue.
The consequence of a no vote.
I think it's pretty straightforward, actually.
We can keep it very general, but we need to tell them there's a path.
I think all you can really say on a no vote is town meeting will be asked if they will pass a moratorium while we figure out rules, which may or may not pass.
See problem. I mean, I don't wanna.
I don't wanna confuse the issue. I think it's pretty straightforward. You either want to have recreational or manuf, you know, the, you either want the.
Commercial marijuana reset.
Commercial, you know, or industrial application of recreational marijuana, or you don't. It really, I think you should talk about the fact that it does not, it doesn't have any implication to their personal use, it doesn't have any implication to their personal growing. I think that's very fair, but I think you have to be careful of saying, and this, this chart right here?
It doesn't help the voter.
I don't think it helps the voter at all.
Actually, people won't see this chart.
I'm not talking about the chart, I'm saying.
And I'm not worried about their intellect, I'm worried about confusing the issue. It's a simple issue.
Yeah, but I think people need to know that if, you know, what it means, what a yes vote means, what a no vote means, and a no vote means, that there's still, there's a town meeting recourse, and I, it's just.
Well.
But now, but now you're giving them a yes or no vote, or an either or.
It's not really a recourse.
Yeah, maybe that is.
It's a timeout.
I think you gotta be very careful with that, I don't think this is that complex, Barry.
I'm gonna give that some thought.
Yeah, if the voters vote no, then we can't prevent it.
I'm not, I'm not saying I quite agree, but I see your point, John.
Well, it's, it's a straightforward, it's a yes or a no vote, that's clear, that's all they're gonna have, should we or shouldn't we, yes or no? But if we're giving them information, we need to kind of give it a little color about sort of how this comes up, and sort of what the, what the choices are before the town, and.
Or you say something general, like a no vote will leave the, the issue open to the vagaries of the state, or something like that.
I think a no vote leaves us open to have it, it's just a question of when. Only the voters can prevent it.
Right.
If they vote no, then we get it.
And I think that's the key component right there, which is exactly what you just said, Bob. I think that's what people will get, and it comes back to what John was saying, you either want it or you don't.
No, you can't.
You guys talking about the vote on April 4th, and you're talking about the town meeting on 49th?
People.
The, the election.
Yeah, we'll have to kick this around.
Yeah, I, yeah, we'll just.
I do hear his point, but I don't wanna not say anything.
Yeah.
We'll find it, we'll find it in the background there.
Article 23 changes from 20 to 25% the affordable for rental. And again, this would allow the town to count all rental units, not just the affordable ones in the 40R district.
Owned are 20.
Owned would stay as 20, rental would change from 20 to 25.
Will that change existing?
Nope.
Yep. It's not retroactive.
Nope. It would give us a framework to have that discussion with anyone, if the economics were right, but no, doesn't reach back. And importantly, there's an exemption if you have a small project, 12 units or smaller.
Oh, so if it's 12 units or smaller, then it, then it's not.
Doesn't apply.
It's only for more than 12 units, which.
Right, 12 or smaller, it doesn't apply.
I didn't listen, I listened to one of their meetings.
So if somebody's down on South Main, or not on South Main, but in between Haven and Washington on Main Street and wants to develop.
Four.
A parcel or two, and they wanna put half a dozen units on top of it.
Yep.
They're not gonna be, they're not gonna be charged with an affordable unit, is what that.
And it's up to the moderator, and we discussed it internally, I don't know if he's gonna allow an amendment to the 12 to be a smaller number. Because that, I'm not sure that's within the four corners. You can make it a bigger number, make it less onerous, but to make it more onerous, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't think you can.
Just, just to throw that out there.
Why don't we just put a, we should have had at least a minimum, you know, number, I mean, if you're gonna do, you know.
Well, it's 12.
No, but I mean, if you gotta do like 10 units, you know, they have a minimum of.
Well, the 13, it'd be 25% of 13, or 20% of 13.
Or, or so it's, it's exempt under 12, but then you have sort of a, you know, it's not 20, it's, it's a, it's one. You know, I.
Have two options.
Why do we give, why do we give, you know, lose the ability to create an affordable unit if it's a small project, granted, it might only be one or two, but it's still.
For the simple reason that affordability-wise, for the developer, they're gonna have a problem making that decision, making the thing pencil out.
Yeah, I don't know how CPDC arrived at 12, I'm sure there was some discussion.
I think it's arithmetic.
Yeah, I had heard property owners want, you know, having interest in doing four units or six units, I don't know what I missed to get them to 12, I'm sure there was discussion, though. And lastly, I think, well, aside from town meeting members, is the making the smart growth district bigger, and putting into the, you know, all the business be as shown in this map. So currently, it's this dotted section right here.
Yep.
And this is just to enhance, increase it to the other side of Main Street.
And that's, that's one we should weigh in on, is my opinion.
And the last article is town meeting members that did not attend half the sessions. It's kind of a big list, but if you remember, we had three town.
I'm shocked at some of the names.
Well, we had three town meetings going at one time, so I counted three times against them if they weren't there.
Oh, true.
So.
That's not fair.
All right, well, it is what it is. So there you go.
I'm sure they'll be rescued by their respective cockeye.
Or if they show up.
If they show, if they're there. I think they'll be there.
So Paul has listed all the articles I just covered from four to the end.
They tend to.
Board can do what it wishes.
They tend to show up for that one, if they want it.
The only, the only two I would see us not supporting are 10, the library, and 25, the removal of members. Anybody have any other thoughts?
How about the retirement board?
Oh, yeah, I've got questions on that, too.
Why would we not do the li, the library?
Well, I'm not proposing anything, so.
I'm not proposing any money for, there's no money recommended, so.
I'm gonna say the FinCom shouldn't support it, because I'm not, we're not asking for anything.
It's not an article yet.
If, if it turns into an article, again, I'll have a lot of explaining to do, and I will, but.
We could just, just not even take a position on that.
That might be a better way.
And then just.
Yeah.
So we would eliminate.
I would eliminate the retirement board, too, because I'm not comfortable. If FinCom's not comfortable, I'm not.
So that's 12, 10 is library.
Isn't town meeting want us to take a position on these things?
It's up to you, totally up to you.
I mean.
Well, I mean, do we, I mean, some of those retirees, if we make it 12, $15,000 a year, I mean.
The town's a tough berry.
I, I, I don't mean to speak for FinCom, that's just Sharon's words saying, you know, she talked to a couple of members at the end of the meeting who were not, not disposed of supporting it. What was the other article to pull, 25?
25 is formulaic, right, it's there every year.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you shouldn't take a position on that, that's a town meeting.
That's not our business, that's the business of the precincts.
It's up to the individual precincts.
It's the precincts and the town meeting, that's really not our business.
No dogging that, but it's.
So 10, 12, and 25.
Move all the rest if you want. We all, all set with discussion?
Yeah, is there, do any, does anybody need to talk about any of these articles?
No.
Other than the ones we talked about?
Do we wanna weigh in on this, on the, on the 40R? I mean, do we wanna have a position on that?
I think you are, by default you are, by not eliminating them.
Yeah.
So would anybody mind if I just read this motion and just say, move all of the recommended subject matter with the exception of. 25, 10?
10 and 12.
And 12. Although the budget's in here, do we, are we moving the budget?
Have we done the past?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
We have part of that, and we're part of the solution to this school committee, I guess, with the.
Well, we, you know, we always sit as an advisor to Bob, and it's Bob's budget, he, I think it's an endorsement of Bob's work.
Another couple of years, another couple of weeks.
Not a couple of weeks.
Although the FinCom will be wanting to talk, be the ones to talk, present it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion on the floor, I will second.
Any further discussion?
So this takes out 10, 12, and 25?
Yes.
Got that right?
Right.
Fourth through 24, otherwise they're good.
Yes, all those in favor?
Hey, I'll leave you with a very quick overview of something for the future. This was only in your today's packet, I didn't wanna scare you over the weekend. This is a list of all the boards and committees I could find in Redding, I'm sure I probably missed some. It's, it's in tonight's handout. If you start at page 10. 10 and 11 give you background of where the boards get their authority. I thought that'd be helpful, and I broke them into four groups. Elected boards and committees, that's pretty easy, independent of the selectmen, you have the library trustees, selectmen moderator, commissioners, RMLD commissioners, and the school committee, those are easy. Open meeting law.
Oh.
And then you have another group of what I would call generally independent of the board of selectors, I mean, you do appoint some members to the audit committee, but they're really very independent of you. So I have audit committee, board of registrars, bylaw committee, celebration committee, which is a, created by town meeting, charter review committee, which will be created by town meeting, cultural council, finance committee, Mystic Valley services, permanent building committee, our CASA and RCTV. So I describe those as generally independent of you. And then, there's really, the rest have more involvement and more oversight by the selectmen. There's a small group that's only partially appointed by you. Even though you may appoint members in that other group, you really don't have direct oversight. Rec committee, you know, you, you have eight out of nine seats, so it's pretty close, but the school committee has one. Housing authority have four out of five, the state has one. Retirement board, as you've just done, you appointed one member. Our MLD citizen advisory board, you have one member, and then the Veterans Memorial Trust Fund. And then the Veterans Memorial Trust Fund is a creation of town meeting. You appoint the custodian of soldiers' sale of graves to that one, so one out of three. The rest of them are all fully yours. I just wanted to give you that overview.
Is this to remind us that if we spread these out, we each have six, they each meet, which means that generally speaking, if we can complete our liaison work, we'll be working probably about three nights a week, always, without any new meetings, special meetings.
No, that doesn't mean you have to watch the meetings live. Well, after minutes, you could watch--
No, I understand that, but, you know, I mean, let's just be real.
A lot of ground to cover.
It is a lot of ground.
It's a lot of ground to cover. And it is, it's not as though you can, you know, sit at home and watch most of these because you can't.
Right.
Not long you can.
You know, most actually, you know, there's very few that you can watch.
And, and I know this will be negotiations, but it's food for thought for you to think about, what do you want RCTV or their successor to cover in the future? You know, we can only negotiate that every so often. So many years ago, there was a very small list of must. I can't remember. School committee, FinCom, CPDC, board of selectmen, whatever.
At this moment, we don't have all elected boards--
No.
--being, being filled.
Right.
Which is almost unthinkable to me, but--
So just to remind you that, you know, that's a lot of ground for them to cover, too, but it's part of the negotiation.
Can we require that they record any meeting being held in a wired type room like this?
I think so.
Is that unreasonable?
I don't know what the remote--
I don't know.
You guys are going to be negotiating that.
They got one guy for the two rooms here. How do they work the--
They, they have the, my understanding is they have the technology to record when they're not physically present here, so I don't think it matters. They should be able to do both. They've said that they will, but I don't know if they do. Whether they can both be live, I don't know.
Well, we'll have to talk to them. I mean, they do it with volunteers, right?
Uh, no.
They're paid.
They're paid.
Yes, sir.
So that's an overview, and the reason I gave it, and this is absolutely a future discussion, but I just wanted to bring it up. My idea was to start creating projects that more than one committee would look at so they'd actually get to know their neighbor. The first one, and I'll show you some, some more slides. The old water treatment plant has sat vacant for quite some time. It's a resource of the town. I think it's time to do some sort of master plan for that site by a group of people.
Have we demolished it?
Say again?
Is it still, did we demolish it?
The treatment plan's gone, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just the land that's there.
Yeah. So I'm, for instance, suggesting this is a project to be led by the conservation agent. I haven't told them yet. And then the DPW director would appoint someone. And just as an example, climate advisory committee, ConsCom, town forest trails would be mandatory, and I think you'd invite the recreation, recreation committee. Those are my thoughts. I just want to show you a quick--
The more that cross-ruffing that happens, the better result.
I think so.
You have an autonomous group in your mind, or it's--
Ad hoc group, maybe?
You know, we'll discuss format. Do you want to create an ad hoc and pick people from that? Do you want to have those whole bodies going in? I don't know.
Let's keep in mind--
There, there has to be more communication, but you don't want a massive group that can't get anything done.
We can't turn this into 50 or 60.
Right.
Because we're already at 36.
Right. Now, these are boards working together, is my idea.
Now that they're working together, do you want them to work autonomously? How do they report out, how do they--
I think we need to decide that. These are all your appointees, just to be clear, in this case. Some others, not so much.
It seems like you want them to be advisory in that group capacity.
In the past, you've created ad hoc committees, not to create a new committee, but--
We just, I mean, I, if we do something on an ad hoc basis, that's fine. The idea of chartering new committees and sunset dates and all that, I mean, just, we can't do it.
I'm just talking about a big project. You want the group to be completely autonomous, or do you want them to outgrieve the whole thing?
You got to throw in the building committee and something like that, too.
Not necessarily, unless you're going to propose to put a builder on it.
That's where you have a master plan in the process.
They're studying all the town on land, so they've got this on their radar. And just to show you, there's a lot of wetlands down there. That's really all I wanted to show.
Yeah, and, you know, who knows? We might find somebody, somebody may have an interest in some commercial development back there that has a certain kind of use that's going to fit.
Yeah. Just to quickly go through a couple others. You know, this is something Nelson Burbank told me almost 10 years ago, and it took me a while to get around to it. And that's to put together a group to talk about community resources and community events. We don't really do this in a centralized way. And, you know, I'll compare ourselves to Wakefield. I have a great deal of admiration of the way Wakefield does a lot of things. They have probably a similar amount of volunteers as us, maybe not quite so many. But their volunteers create things and do them, and they invite the town to attend, as opposed to they come to the town and say, can you do this? And we might come and help you. Wakefield does not have the bandwidth any more than Reading does for some of this, so the residents go and do it themselves. They form a nonprofit. You know, their, their July, or their parade is all nonprofit. They do Italian American night. They do a number of events completely on their own. And, you know, there's good and bad for any approach, but the point is, I think Reading should sit down and talk about community events. You know, we, we talked about the Fall Street Fair. There's three events that we do now. This is an economic development tool to some degree. You know, let's talk about it as a, as a group. And I think the rec administrator is the right one to lead this. I have board of health because it would involve that. I have the elected boards invited to this one because it seems like a broad community thing. Council on Aging, Fall Street Fair Committee, Human Relations Advisory Committee, and RCTV. And the recreation committee seem to all make sense. So those were two relatively simple things, relatively, that I think could start immediately. I have some other things down the road. Nelson also asked me that years ago to get some organized charitable giving instrument, and maybe this is more important, we move it up. You know, what he said to me was, there's a lot of people in this town that would donate if they knew what they were giving for.
I think he's right about that.
And I, I know that he's right about that because I've had that conversation with a number of people over the years. You're not asking me, so I'm not giving. You know, you guys, a bunch of you sat on the trust fund commissioners. You know the resources we have. You know, the Veterans Memorial Trust Fund that started, I don't know, 10 years ago. And I do see occasionally they advertise it and they fundraise for it, but it's not big-time fundraising.
There's also a limit to what they spend it on, so--
Absolutely, but, and that's the question.
They would ask for more probably if they had a project that they--
They could pay for the veterans' agent.
Just saying.
So I think that, again, a wide swath of these groups, this is more financially oriented, board of cemetery trustees, and I won't go through the list. Historical document preservation, I think at some point is very important for this town. A lot of you know what's in this building, what's in the library. It's, it's about time we organize that, and the town clerk should, and the library should be involved in that.
I think you're absolutely right, Barry.
It's $15,000 in the budget for this next year, but it's a holdback for the school budget. $15,000 doesn't go very far, but she--
No, but you've got climate issues, you've got--
Laura can come in sometime and show you what she did for $15,000 last year. It's really remarkable, some of the documents that were restored from hundreds of years ago to current condition. So it's kind of embarrassing that we don't do a particularly good job on this.
You know, one of the coolest books I've ever seen is this Atwood End.
Yeah.
Atwood End is a great book.
I go back to, because there's a ton of work put into writing that and laying it out. I could imagine these historical documents might be a kind of a, an appendix to that.
Well, and we have a--
Have you ever, have you ever roamed downstairs?
I have. I mean, I-- You're afraid of touching some of these things. They're 400 years old, right?
Break it, you bought it.
But it's stunning, it's sitting downstairs.
You could, you could product that. You could turn that into something people would buy. Another kind of a compendium of the history of Reading from the original documents.
I mean, we have, you know, very interested and active two historical commissions, if you will, at this point, with the historic district commission. One would think this is a project that they would enjoy. And I think a lot of people in this town would enjoy participating.
Especially coming up to, what, 375 with the celebration committee.
Yeah. And, and last but not least, Andrew and I have chatted about this. We're not sure what the right timing is. He'd rather do it yesterday. Some kind of economic development planning that would involve a lot of boards and committees. That's a much bigger project. That's a much bigger--
Well, he's making his rounds.
Yeah, I know, he is.
Herding cats.
Yeah.
But he's doing a good, he's doing a really good job of making the rounds.
Yeah. Yeah, and he wasn't kidding about that lunch he set up because I had heard about that. This one is, is a big project. This is essentially what you've sort of discussed for the last year or two of having a summit.
Right.
I think this is really the focal point of such a summit.
Absolutely.
Doesn't involve every board or committee, but it does, it does touch many of them.
We, we have to act on this.
It gives you a focus.
So I just wanted to throw that out there now. We kick it around a little bit more as to, first of all, what's the most important priorities? We don't want to do them all. There's no way that's going to work. One or two, we can get started.
Because, I mean, these boards still have their regular work to do.
Right. And you want to discuss, each, each of these or any other idea can have different formats from each other. It does not have to be the same thing, but you want to discuss that. What's the most effective way? My idea was not to create any new boards or committees, there's plenty. And I don't know what the appetite for some of these members are. Some of them have a hard time having joint meetings because they meet in a Monday or a Wednesday, and if you don't meet in a Monday, I can't go. If you don't meet on Wednesday, I can't go. So, you know, there might be some logistical issues, but especially in jeans department, we've done a really good job in the last three or four years of putting staff together to talk to each other. Now, first of all, they're full-time mostly. They have the time to talk to each other. They, they understand what's going on in every sector, more or less, not perfectly. The boards don't have that opportunity. You guys know when you've sat with other boards how productive it generally is.
Yeah.
They need the same thing. You know, boards that peripherally touch each other. I don't know, just pick any two, you could probably name--
A lot of our, a lot of our boards are siloed.
Yeah.
And, and not, not because they don't want to, it's just that people are drawn to them because they have a certain interest or a certain expertise, and they're passionate about it, and they do it, and they serve well. It takes someone outside of that silo to kind of bring them together, and I think it would work just as well.
Well, I can tell you the solution, and I can tell you the chances of you implementing it. I insist on a rotation program among volunteers. Don't let them just go to one thing and stay there. You start here, then you go here, then you go there. Well, I've asked other mayors and managers, and they all think that's crazy, but if you want them to see a broader picture of the town, that's how you get it.
Although, you know, just being on the basket this year, how many new people have come to join on things that, you know, they raise their hand and they're in.
You know, some of you, two of you, three of you. You know, being on FinCom gives you a broad picture and helps you step into another role. There's not a lot of boards and committees that are like that, that have a broad picture of the whole town in any way.
Right.
You know, they have it for conservation, they have it for historic, but they don't have all the pieces. And you're right, it's not their fault.
You're not going to be on CPDC and then like, you know, the trails committee.
But these groups would create--
Right.
They'd create a focal point.
That, that's a nonsense.
Yeah, I think you've just got to get people in the same room for some common purpose. You're going to have to argue about something and not agree for a while.
I think if they did a trial and do it again, you might be surprised. People might--
Yeah, I think they would.
I think we have to bring the project to them. You just can't say, okay, guys, what do you want to do? And then you'll have 80 people with 90 ideas.
That's why, you know, Stroud is, that's a project.
Right.
Here's an area, figure it out.
That's tangible.
That one's easy. The others I'd have to work a little bit on.
You need a desired outcome. Can you describe all the focused means that they can use if they're disposed of?
Yeah.
Well, not even necessarily an outcome, just say, here's a, here's a problem set.
Well, you know, the timeliness of this is really important because what it does is it, I mean, we're ready to reorganize soon.
Yeah.
And, you know, typically coming along with that is, you know, moving around the liaison responsibilities and, you know, a fresh set of eyes in some cases, experience in others, but it all ties into this thing that you're building here about this paper.
Yeah, and, you know, some of these groups will work out, some of them won't. You learn from both, and you try it again, whatever it is.
We're coming up on 375 years, right?
It feels that way.
It wasn't all done tonight.
Yeah, Alan is, I guess, leading that effort, Alan Foles, but I haven't heard from, since I think it was last annual town meeting, he might have given up. Maybe it was a year ago in November, actually. I don't remember when.
That could be.
That could be a focal point.
I mean, you could have--
Well, that could be this community event's focal point.
Where I was going with this, though, is I belong to a church in Wakefield that was the first parish, and they're doing their 375, and I know all of the derivatives they're doing as well. North Reading's doing the same thing. Is there a really big idea between all the towns?
No, that's interesting.
Between all of old Reading. It's up to them what it is. I mean, that's Reading.
Welcome to 1644 again, right?
I also want to pass this around, speaking of old Reading.
That is a very cool item here.
Some of you have seen this, some of you haven't. It's, it's attempted to be produced in your handout tonight, page 13.
Handle with care. It's really cool to even see that the color still exists.
For the audience, I'll read a letter from post office box 5859 in San Diego, California, addressed to me. Dear sir, On Sunday, June 6, 1954, a parade formed near Shute Street, then marched along Haven Street to Main Street to Pleasant Street, to where Pleasant Street intersects Eaton Street. That was followed by the dedication of a Little League baseball field freshly built in the Hunt Memorial Park. Although I don't know how they got it, my family has a hard copy of the souvenir program for that event for many years. It's in good condition, and I thought Reading might like it. The adults involved here have long gone, of course, but some of the players age eight to 12 might still remember the dedication and might like to see what they looked like as children. That includes the program.
Bill Brown.
Jim Varnador.
Oh, no, it's not. Bill Brown would precede this.
So first of all, this is one of the most interesting documents I've ever seen, and for this fellow to take the time instead of just tossing it and writing it to us, I thought was great. And I'd like to reply something to him. I thought it'd be really interesting if, as a community project, we tried to find the people in these pictures. You know, it'll take some advertising, it'll take some information.
The Star Commission, no.
But boy, if you could find 20 people that still live in the area and take a picture of them, it'd be great.
I actually think you'd probably find a number of them quickly on the, I grew up in Reading site.
Okay.
I mean--
My parents were married on this day.
Wow.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, they can put the old uniforms back on, post, and--
Have you seen this yet, John?
I have.
This thing is stunning.
Oh, what's most amazing is now the company's around it.
The list of businesses, yeah.
Sponsor company.
Yeah. It's a really interesting document.
The photograph of Hunt Field is great.
Wow, there's no trees. All the trees grew after.
But the shack is there.
Yeah.
We'll try to get a good copy. I did it quick for your packet. A better copy, I will put it online.
Well, they will--
And we'll try to publicize it.
They have real dugouts.
Oh, absolutely.
What happened to them?
Scoreboards out there?
Okay. While we're, while we're having this viewing fun here, let's do the minutes, huh? Are you done?
I am, also, thanks.
I can do it if you're, I will do the minutes for you.
Okay, please do.
Would the board of selectmen approve the minutes of February 21, 2017 as amended?
We got a second?
Any discussion?
No, good job.
All in favor? Okay. I think it's now time to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
10:35.
Night caller.
Night caller.